I call the meeting to order, please. Today is June 27th. It is in the Teacher Education Center. It's a regular school board meeting. So I call the meeting to order. At this time, if you would, please join me. And Sean Frost will be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Sean.
Thanks, sir.
The next order of business will be the adoption of the orders of the day. And I have a note here to ask Dr. Rendell. We're requesting the, to add consent item M. BBK.
Yes, to add consent item M. Also to note that action K was removed. I also want to go ahead and delete action item M. Delete action item M, which is the recommendation for termination. So we delete that. So that will not be happening tonight.
We're deleting M, action M. And adding K.
Correct.
To the...
Consent.
To consent. K was actually added last Friday.
Okay, board members. Anybody else?
Move to adopt the orders of the day as amended.
Second.
Does everybody have a chance to pull anything? Okay. All right. I have a motion by Frost and second by Ms. Justice. You're okay?
Mm-hmm.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Next item will be presentations.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We actually have two presentations. The first is a re-awarding of an award that our district received just last week. We were chosen as one of the best places to work in Indian River County. So we're going to celebrate that accomplishment here in just a second. After that, we're going to go through a brief presentation of the first draft of our five-year strategic plan. We've been involved in this strategic planning process for several months now. And so tonight, we're going to share with the board and the public the first draft of the plan. We also have scheduled a town hall meeting in this very room this Thursday night to go over the draft strategic plan in more detail with the community members, especially some of the community members that helped us formulate the ideas that are in the plan. But first, the presentation of the Career Source Research Coast Award. I'll turn that over to our new Public Information Officer, Kristin McMullin. Kristin.
Good evening, everyone. So wonderful to see so many people here tonight. Members of the board, Mr. Chairman, Dr. Rendell, thank you very much. Well, I've known it all along as a district employee. But last week, Career Source made it official that we are one of the best places to work. And that was decided by the district employees. This designation was based on objective analysis of a 40-question survey, including items such as employee turnover, training, benefit offerings, employee orientation systems, working conditions, and innovative employee support programs. The district has approximately 2,100 employees, serving the educational needs of approximately 18,000 students at 23 work sites. And we are blessed and humbled to be a workplace for our employees to enjoy coming to every day. Thank you to Career Source for this designation. And thank you to our employees for all that you do to make our district one of the best and for inspiring us to strive for continued excellence every day. Thank you.
So we're going to take a quick photo down here with the award. If we have all the board members come down. Dr. Fritz, definitely. Dr. Stewart, if you can. He's got the ring.
One more, please. Thank you.
One of the things that I mentioned to somebody the other day when I was talking to them about the award is it's the people in the district that make it such a great place to work. So when the district, so to speak, gets an award like that, it's actually an award for the entire workforce of all the people that are involved in the district. So next, we're going to hear a little bit about our strategic plan, our draft strategic plan. Mr. Bruce Green, one of our Assistant Superintendents, has been the lead person on this project. So he's going to present a PowerPoint presentation that kind of outlines parts of the plan. The plan is actually live online right now on our website. So you can actually go to our website. Not only can you see this PowerPoint, but you can also see the entire draft plan. Members of the board, you have a copy of the draft plan in front of you. Audience members, I think we do have some draft copies of the plan to hand out. Mr. Green, I'll turn it over to you now.
Thank you, Dr. Rendell, board members. So Mr. Taylor and Mr. Bender are passing out copies. We hopefully have enough. Let's see. Exciting to see everyone coming out this evening for our board meeting. So if we don't, hopefully you can share. But hopefully we'll have enough. So I just want to go back and remind us of where we've been and then briefly talk about the layout of the plan. As Dr. Rendell stated, currently, as of right now, at the start of the meeting, the draft plan is posted online on the homepage. The PowerPoint that we're sharing now is on the homepage, as well as a feedback survey that we're going to discuss for the public to be able to give us input on this draft strategic plan from now until July 11. So with that, as they are passing out the plans, I'll just go back and remind us, we started this process in February. And we've been going through the six phases from prepare, assess, engage, design, launch, and succeed. And we're currently in the design phase. We started out back with the prepare and assess phase, where we reviewed a lot of information from our previous strategic plan, which was several years old, to our school report card data, digital classroom plans, just information that we did some historical research on. We then had some engagement sessions with our community. We actually had 27 engagement sessions between March 13th, 14th, and 15th onsite at various schools and community organizations and groups that were able to give us some insight into what might be needed in a strategic plan, areas that we might want to consider. As well as that, those engagement sessions, we also had a town hall meeting. And we had an online survey where people could give input. And from those various touchpoints, if you will, we had a total of 714 responses. And those are duplicated. Somebody may have attended the town hall and completed the online survey. But we had a total of 714 touchpoints, if you will, or feedback from our community on what might be needed in a strategic, five-year strategic plan for the school district. So I broke that down a little bit. And of the people responding in all those engagement sessions, 31% of those were parents of current students. 27% were school district staff. If you were to add the 17% community members with the 6% business community leaders, about 23% are community members, which would be the next largest chunk. Then there's parents of former students, students, and other groups. That's just the layout of the demographic of who provided information during those engagement sessions. And then, if you recall, we came back to the board and shared the findings. I believe that was at May 9th workshop, where there was an executive summary provided. Information came forward. And one of those components was a SWOT analysis, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. And those were common threads that were throughout the feedback that was given during the engagement sessions. And those phases, prepare and assess, engagement sessions, and then the school board workshop, all led up to kind of identifying some themes and some goal areas that the board kind of agreed upon. For example, we talked about having equity built in through all of the various goal areas. So you'll see that tonight as we go through the plan. And now, we've been in the design plan phase. We have been superintendent cabinet and staff. We've been writing and designing and the objectives and goals and measures of success. So we're going to share how the plan is laid out. But as we really researched, what kind of theme, or what would we, how would we brand it? And how would we present the strategic plan? We had ideas from the Treasure Coast and maybe everything from treasures and treasure map, kind of like the Mel Fisher thing in Sebastian, to seashells and the waves and the ocean, to the Indian River Lagoon. And after it all, we kind of came back to honoring our history and the logo that we have for the school district. Because the logo really does honor our past, it values our community, and it sets that striving for educational excellence. So once we decided to return to that, we did a little research on our logo and kind of wanted to find out a little bit more about it. How did it come about? So with that, I'd actually like to read to you the minutes from the October 10th, 1989 school board meeting. The new logo for the school district was presented to the board. Dr. Norris stated it was designed, he was the superintendent at the time, "to simply and effectively communicate the school district's emphasis on students' total achievement and environment that the student must live within. It represents the district's central theme that when home, school, and community combine to form a unified partnership, educational excellence will be achieved. The logo deals with the symbolic unification of the three independent entities of home, school, and community. In the logo, the buildings overlap each other as a representation of unity, working partnerships, and the interdependence of the three entities when educational excellence is the goal." Dr. Norris added that when examined closely, the three structures used in the logo resemble arrows pointing upward. And this is symbolic of the active progression of the triad towards educational excellence. The new logo stresses the thought of the teacher who originated it. The word unity is capitalized. Unity is the central theme of our district and the ultimate goal of the school district of Indian River County. At that time, Dr. Norris presented a Golden Apple Award to Ms. Karen Lynch, teacher from Sebastian River Middle School, whose entry was the winning school district motto. So with that, for those in the viewing audience and the board, you'll see that the visual coherency on the plan has five major goal areas that came about from those themes, those emergent themes. And they're all surrounded and supported by that home-school-community connection represented through our district logo. The five goal areas: student success, culture and climate, high-quality educators, community and engagement, communication and engagement, and strategic partnerships. So we'll take a closer look at each one of those goal areas. Goal one, student success, as you can imagine. And each one of the goal areas has a goal statement with it. So for example, student success, we have the word performance to represent that, that every student receives a high-quality education that is grounded in high expectations, personalized to meet his or her needs and interests, and backed by the necessary learning supports. So that goal statement was derived from those themes that came from those engagement sessions. Things that were heard from the community, such as needing support structures for students, whether it was social-emotional, whether it was academic, whether it was tiered support, needing to personalize instructions for students, needing to provide high-quality education. The second goal area, culture and climate, you'll see revolves around safe and orderly school environment and providing staff and students that positive learning and work environment where they can strive and feel safe, supported, and celebrated. Goal three, high-quality educators. So we're talking about having the best talent here. As educators are the heart of our student success, we will attract support and retain a high-quality workforce. Goal four, communication and engagement revolves around transparency and using communication and engagement to build awareness and trust, which leads to stronger relationships that benefit student learning. And goal five, strategic partnerships. And partnerships with all stakeholders in our community that help lead to success. So I do kind of want to go through the format of the plan. And those of you that have the book will see this, and it's online as well. But just using goal two as an example, each one of the goal areas with the goal statement is then supported by objectives. Each goal area has three objectives, as you can see here, for culture and climate. Objective 2.2 is physical safety and that every school provides a safe and secure learning environment. And we heard that from the goal statement, where they feel safe, supported, and celebrated, which came from the feedback we got in the engagement sessions. Each one of those objectives in turn is supported by strategies. So there'll be supporting strategies for each objective. Each one of those strategies in turn, for example, conduct safety and security inspections at each school site and facility to identify concerns, are supported by measures of success, records of inspection identifying any physical deficiencies. So this is an example of what an entire objective would look like in a goal area. It would have the goal, the goal statement, the objective, the strategies, and the measures of success. So this is just an example of an entire goal area supported by objectives, strategies, measures of success. And each goal area would have three objectives. Looking a little bit deeper into the goal areas, student success, the three objectives, again tie back to the goal statement. So objective 1.1, that all students will graduate with the skills necessary for college and career success. All students receive high-quality instruction and rigorous coursework. And all students are provided the supports needed to ensure their academic success. You'll be able to tie each one of those objectives back to the goal statement in some way. And as well, you'll see that the equity pieces, you'll see that in the various objectives intertwined to ensure that all students receive high-quality education. For goal two, culture and climate, you can see that we have an objective around emotional support, that schools, every school fosters a caring and responsive culture to ensure positive learning environments for staff and students. We have physical safety that we looked at already. And celebrating success so that our schools, every school is recognizing and celebrating the accomplishments of its staff and its students. And again, those are things we heard through the feedback. High-quality educators, it's all about attracting, supporting, and retaining that talent. So you'll see, objective one is to intentionally plan for that, to attract support and retain the best educators. Then how to attract, and then how to support and retain those individuals. Goal four, communication and engagement. You will see intentional communication. So we're going to plan for intentional communication with common protocols across our schools and facilities. And have internal engagement, as well as external engagement with our external stakeholders. And goal five, strategic partnerships. As we know, families is that number-one strategic partnership that we have. And that home-school-community logo represents that. As well as with our existing organizations, we want to partner with those and seek out opportunities to engage with other partnerships and other organizations and individuals. We know that volunteering in our schools is a very strong partnership that we have. So we want to continue to volunteer in our school. So what you have before you this evening, we're not going to go through every single strategy and goal and objective and measure of success this evening, but it's online. Everyone has the book that's here. The PowerPoint is online as well. And there is a feedback survey on our homepage that when you click on it, will ask a couple of questions just to give us some feedback, because this is the initial draft. We'll be collecting that feedback from now until July 11. So the initial draft is out there. This Thursday at 6 o'clock in this room, as Dr. Rendell mentioned, there will be a town hall that we will share the plan as well. And then that will give opportunity for feedback at that time, as well as the ability for people to take it home and digest it and give us feedback survey, fill the feedback survey out between now and July 11, with a goal, depending on how that goes, with a goal of bringing it back to a school board meeting for approval, the final draft on July 25th, and then a communications plan and a launch, so that the plan would launch in August at the beginning of the school year. So with that...
Questions and answers from the board at this time? I just have one question, Bruce. You mentioned that this is on our homepage. Can you recite what that homepage might be for some of the folks that may not know?
Absolutely. And when you type in www.indianriverschools.org, it's also on the back of the booklet you have in front of you. When you scroll down, you'll see a large button, Strategic Planning Information. But we've put the draft strategic plan right here. You don't even have to click to get to that page. You can view that plan. And below it is the feedback survey. If you do click on the strategic planning information, all the documents that we've been going through over various board workshops, including this plan and this PowerPoint, are posted at the bottom for the community to review the process.
Thank you very much. Anybody else have anything to add? Try.
Mr. Green, thank you for the presentation. The five goals are based on five themes that surfaced during the engagement phase. Each of the five goals has a set of objectives, three different objectives for each of the goal areas. So there's 15 objectives, and then there are strategies and measurable outcomes. So five goal areas, 15 objectives, 45 strategies, and 45 measurable outcomes. And this is the initial or draft plan. We invite the community to give us feedback on it, so we can bring back a final plan to bring to the board for approval on July 25. So you have several ways to give us your input. You can attend the town hall meeting this Thursday, or you can go online and look at the plan online. And there's a feedback survey there online as well. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Very good. Thank you, Bruce.
Just to let people know that there are...
Oh, yeah. I was going to say, we've got about 10 seats up here on the front row. And we're not going to take up an offering, so if you want to come up... They're available up here now. Come on up. We'll take about a couple of seconds here for you to come on up.
This is going to be a long one.
This is going to be a lengthy meeting. So last call. Nine more seats up here. While they're coming up, I want to go ahead and get into the next item. It's Citizen Input. And the first speaker tonight is going to be Diane Parentella. While she's coming up, the folks that turned in the Citizen Input forms that want to speak on a specific action item, you will be called on when that item actually comes up. It will not be at this section of the meeting. So Diane, I'm sorry to interrupt you there.
No problem. Good evening, school board members. Usually, I come to speak at a meeting, and I come with a speech prepared well in advance and related to a particular agenda item. That is not the case tonight, however. After attending the workshop this afternoon, I feel I need to speak about the issue of our insurance plans. I do not serve on the Health Insurance Advisory Task Force, but some of my fellow IRCEA representatives do. I also know that the CWA and retiree groups are also represented. Moving to one plan was not something the committee recommended or supported. Those employees on the low plan chose that plan because it is what they can afford. Moving to one plan would increase the cost to those employees who can least afford it. I hope you will consider the Health Insurance Advisory Task Force recommendations when making decisions about our insurance plans. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parentella. The next speaker is Carl Zimmerman. Get some exercise, Carl.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent, Chairman of the Board, and board members. My name's Carl Zimmerman. I'm a board member of the Indian River Charter High School and have been for over 12 years. I'm here this evening to encourage you to both support and implement the court decision concerning the charter capital funding issue. I think it's time for us to move together. I think we have common goals, as it represents educating and moving forward with both improving and establishing continuing guide points for educating the children in our community. So I'd just like to encourage you to support that court decision as you meet in executive session later on this evening. Thank you.
The next speaker, Mike Murray.
Good evening, board members, Dr. Rendell. My name is Mike Murray, and I'm the president of the CWA, Local 32180. And I'm also one of the negotiating committee members. Tonight, I come to discuss our contract negotiations that have been going on for many months now. During one of our negotiations, Dr. Fritz, the chief negotiator of the district, stated, and I quote, "Indian River County has a high unemployment rate, and we, the district, fill positions." What a slap in the face. We have worked very hard during negotiations and do not deserve a response like that. We were then offered a 0% raise. How can this be? Our employees cannot afford another pay cut. The CWA is bargaining in good faith while working for months to come up with a mutual agreed insurance hike. The hike was extremely difficult for many of our employees, who were already working from paycheck to paycheck. It is, if it has had not to, if it has had not, I'm sorry. If it had not been for the three-tiered system of insurance coverage, many would have to do without. This is a must for our employees. If the negotiation process was not dragged out for so long, we have, we may have come to a mutual agreement sooner, where not have been such an impact to the budget for payback for wage increases. Would this long, agonizing bargaining process be the norm for our upcoming negotiations? I hope not. I know the school board has issues with payback wages. But why can't a fair pay raise be based on the national cost of living budgeted at the beginning of the fiscal year? That way, the raise would not have been budgeted, would have been budgeted and not come from other funds. I'm sorry, a little nervous. Our support staff consists of teacher assistants, custodians, food service workers, bus drivers, secretaries, and maintenance workers, as well as many other behind-the-scenes employees. We all work hard at the district because we love our jobs and the kids. Even though many of us do not directly teach our students, we are a vital part of the education and atmosphere. We make sure they are fed many times. This is only their meal. This is their only meal. We assist other teachers in the classroom, assisting children, and assisting the teachers. We make sure the schools are clean, providing a healthy environment, and the bus driver is making sure our children arrive to school and home safely. We make sure the lights work, rooms are conditioned properly, and restrooms are clean in a working order. We may be working behind the scenes and unnoticed, but I am sure, if not for our support staff and the individual expertise, our entire school system would shut down. Since our new executive board for the CWA took over last fall, we have been given great reviews from administration and many other directors and supervisors. They were excited for the change. It is about time we are treated with respect that we all deserve. All we're asking for is to be treated fairly and the ability to make a decent earning for ourselves and our family. We do not deserve a 0% raise. We are asking you, our board members in the school district, to please reconsider our last proposal by offering a pay raise that we can feel proud of.
The next speaker is Frank Peterman.
Mr. Chairman, I had a little packet that I wanted to give to you guys. My name is Frank Peterman, and I represent the teachers here in Indian River County. I'm the Treasure Coast Service Union Director. And I was also here at the budget workshop earlier. And the insurance proposal that you guys had to go to one plan is very problematic to our employees. Like Mr. Murray said, some of our ESP employees that I don't represent, they're making $10,000, $15,000, $20,000 a year. So they need that lower plan. More importantly, you have people that are healthy, that are younger... More importantly, you have people that are healthy, that are younger, that are in the lower plan that save you money. If we want to make changes to insurance, let's look at things like the wellness clinic that saved the district $500,000 last year. If we're looking to make changes to insurance, let's increase the contribution. Ms. Simcheck, I remember you brought up earlier that, you know, do other districts have three plans? What are their negotiations like? What I've given to you is the insurance meeting I was at earlier in Okeechobee. We've negotiated a 2% decrease in insurance, and we negotiate with Florida Blue as well. So I just wanted to give you a good idea of it can be done with three plans. And the board contribution is pretty high. I'm not to say there's anything wrong with you guys, just wanted to let you know that three plans is definitely the way to go.
Thank you very much, Mr. Peterman. The next speaker is Beverly Rayford.
Good evening. I'm Beverly Rayford, Clerical Area Vice President for CWA Local 3180. I have a couple of forms here. The first one we're handing out is the Cost of Living Index for Vero Beach and the surrounding area. As you will see, we are higher. However, in addition to that, us having a higher cost of living, we found that from our negotiations meeting, we were told that our salaries were in the middle. So with the higher cost of living, salaries in the middle, even with that 39 cent an hour increase we got, with the higher insurance rates, we actually received a decrease in our take-home pay. Now, that's, also, we found that over 500 of our support staff members are at the poverty level and lower. Now, at this time, I've got another handout that you might have received, which was a newspaper article. I in no way mean to diminish it, but I asked my team if I could go off script a little bit, and this article was on my mind this morning. It's an article where one of our support staff member, a teacher assistant at Dodger Town, in a classroom, teaching and assisting students with autism. This young lady was an amazing employee, had two students in the district that were among our best and brightest, one at Rosewood and one at Oslo Middle. Because she didn't have enough financial stability to even keep her utilities on, her electricity was turned off. She was found in the house deceased. She and her two children, a support staff, our students. Don't mean to diminish this at all, but that's the condition, not able to meet necessities. Staff members who are parents in our district, teachers and staff, don't have enough. They didn't feel like coming forward tonight. It's embarrassing when you make so little, you can't keep your utilities on, and it's costly. We have staff that are on food stamps. We have staff that are struggling, homes going into foreclosure, in the best place to work in Indian River County. We have some work to do. We have some work to do, and we are appealing to you. We're celebrating being one of the best places to work. We love our jobs. And my three minutes are up, but I hope you understand that assistance for those that are supporting this district is needed, and this is a serious thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rayford. The next speaker is Becky Cook.
Good evening, Board Members and Dr. Rendell. This is just an information sheet, give you some ideas about support staff. There are approximately 700 support staff employees. Can you hear me?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, good.
The number of days that support staff work, 186 to 250 days a year. The number of hours range from four hours a day to eight hours a day. The hourly wage starts at $10.83 per hour. Annual salaries start at approximately $8,000. An estimate of 500 employees, nearly three-quarters of the total support staff employees, the number is actually a little higher than that, make less than $25,000 a year. The majority of support staff employees' annual salary incomes are 200% or less of the federal poverty guidelines. The Bureau of Labor Statistics, Standard Statistics, states that the cost of living in the southeast region increased by 2.2% between March 2016 and March 2017. The last wage increase support staff received was for 2015-2016 physical year, which was 39 cents per hour for each support staff employee. Unfortunately, that did not come close to helping to offset the huge increase on our medical insurance premiums this physical school year. Support staff employees paid an increase in their monthly healthcare premium of 41% to 182%, depending on which plan they elected to be in. During the school district and CWA negotiations, we were told there were no additional income, so we would receive a status quo pay raise. So does that mean support staff only gets a wage increase if there's some kind of additional income? Is support staff not figured into the school district's annual budget for any kind of wage increase? Support staff employees are dedicated and hard-working employees, many of which have been with the school district for many years. It is our hope that the school board will reconsider the status quo pay raise. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. The next speaker is John Dill.
Good evening, Board Members. Dr. Rendell, I'm John Dill. I work for a physical plant. I'm also the Executive Vice President of the Union and a member of the Negotiating Committee. I may repeat some of the points already made, but I'd like to reiterate them. The past two offers from the school district were no raise, take away performance pay, no cost of living, no nothing. And we've worked a whole year into the new, first year of a new contract, and we are making less money than we did a year ago, considering the rise in healthcare costs. And as Dr. Fritz was quoted as saying in a negotiation meeting, that the unemployment rate is high in Indian River County, and they'd have no problem filling our positions, which is not true, because many of these positions are posted for a long time, because the school district can't fill them, because they can't find qualified employees that can also pass the background of drug tests. Is this how the school district treats its employees? No raise, take away performance bonus, and if you don't like it, quit, because we'll find someone else to take your place? You won't be getting an award for best place to work in the future with that kind of attitude. The latest proposal from the Union was a two-year contract to recover from June 2016 to June 2018. In that way, we've proposed the first year, we would get no raise. That's because we've been told that many Board Members oppose any retroactive pay. Fine, we'll give in to that. But at least give us a decent raise for the second year, considering the cost of living rise in Indian River County. Also, keeping the performance bonus is beneficial to the school district to encourage people to do good quality work. I urge the school board members to carefully consider the latest proposal from the Union, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Dill. The next speaker is Amy Banoff.
Good evening. My name is Amy Banoff. I am President of the Board of Directors at Sebastian Charter Junior High School, and I am here on behalf of all five of our public charter schools in Indian River County. We currently have the best relationship with our school district in the 20-year history of the charter school movement in Indian River County. So it may seem incongruous for citizens to read about the court ruling, about the legal dispute between the county charter schools and the school district. When the district levied a voter-approved millage of .6 mil back in 2012, the district chose to share only 5% with the charter schools, rather than the 12% representative share of charter school student enrollment. The five local charter schools joined together to challenge the legality of the funding. These operating funds should have benefited all children in our district equally, including the more than 2,200 public charter school students. Florida law provides that students enrolled in a public charter school shall be funded the same as students enrolled in other public schools in the district. On June 13th, Judge Kanarak ruled that this four-year critical needs levy was not shared legally with the local public charter schools. The judge's ruling supports the charter school's assertion that the millage money from 2012 levy should have been shared on a prorata, per-student basis. The amount of the funds in dispute is estimated to be $2.5 million for the four years. Moreover, state statute clearly provides for interest on non-payment of funds due to public charter schools. The interest rate is punitive, and it is compounded monthly. None of the current district board members were in office in 2012, when the district made the incorrect decision on how the funds would be shared. When this matter became a legal dispute, some of our current board members expressed concern about voting against the will of their predecessors, who had followed the advice of their legal counsel. I imagine your legal counsel will now advise this board to appeal the court's decision. The charter schools strongly urge this board not to appeal Judge Kanarak's ruling. Please do not spend thousands more of the taxpayers' dollars on more legal fees to keep the funds duly owed to the public charter schools. Interest is occurring, is currently accruing at a rate of more than $1,000 for each day the funds are withheld. An appeal would be very costly to our children's education, and it would also damage the current positive relationship that we share between the charter schools and our district. Judge Kanarak's ruling was decisive and stated, quote, "Clear language of the law dictated the funds to be shared equitably." The district's arguments were rejected as having, quote, "No basis in fact or in the law," end quote. This is now up to this current school board to follow the judge's order. Then, we can all move forward with the cooperative relationship that has been a byproduct of this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Banoff. The next speaker is Alan Siddles.
Good evening, to all of you. I'm speaking on behalf of my wife, Vicki Siddles. She, she's a buyer for the school district of Indian River County for almost 10 years. She was allowed to bring in 10 years of experience, and when she was hired, had been frozen on step 14 for six years. She has a total of almost 30 years of procurement experience. She's also the Local 3180 CWA Secretary. She loves her job, she loves what she does, and she admires her coworkers and respects her director. She has but one complaint, and that's her very low and shrinking pay scale. When she was first hired with the district, she'd been laid off, and when she took this position, she did so not because of the pay, but rather because of the provided insurance at that time. Every year for the past six years, her take-home pay has decreased. Luckily, we're a dual-income family. We don't have any dependents. But she comes to you tonight with a plea for the 700 support personnel that do not have that luxury, those that must work two or three jobs to put food on the table, those that are at the poverty level, those that have to choose between paying a partial light bill, groceries, shoes for the kids, or a doctor bill. We have too many of those stories of real-life human beings that work for you. They struggle every day to make ends meet. In negotiations about a month back, the CWA was told by Dr. Fritz that there would be no increase in wages, and he frankly said unemployment in Vero was too high and that support personnel can be, quote-unquote, easily replaced. I do not know if you can fathom how demoralizing and adversarial that was to hear from HR to make that statement, as to add insult to injury. The very least, it's unprofessional, speaks volumes about the administration's attitude towards their employees. The bargaining group has made huge efforts to come together with the board, with administrators, to be team players. That was mostly definitely not a team-player attitude, however, is indicative of how we have been seen in a, seen, sorry. It's indicative of how we have seen a turn in the administration over the last few years. The impression is that they simply don't care about the employees', whose average wage is $15 an hour, which I personally can't fathom at all. We have 515 employees that make under $25,000 a year. Giving those people a 3% raise would cost the school district about $378,000, or $378,525. If we average out the other 200 employees that are at $38,500, a 3% increase is $231. This totals $609,525. It's not a large sum of money for the school district and would assist our lowest-paid employees in compensating for the cost of living increases and the exorbitant insurance rates. I appeal to your sense of compassion and fairness, and thank you for your consideration.
Perfect. Thank you. The next speaker is Maureen Westbury.
Good evening. My name is Maureen Westberg. I'm Vice President for the Custodial Staff of the Local CWA 3180. This report is intended to identify the challenges of our employees and their families, and what they are facing now and in the future. Less poverty, more prosperity. The Florida Fiscal Cliff Report by the Florida Chamber of Commerce shows on a chart on Page 5, states that 33.1 million people are living in poverty in the state of Florida. Of those 3,944,000 are children under the age of 18. Florida's poverty rates in all age categories are higher than the national average. On the next page, 6, the graph shows that people are counted as being in poverty when their annual income falls below the federal poverty guidelines. For example, if you're making $40,000 a year and you have eight dependents, you're living in poverty. On Page 7, the map shows that in Indian River County, 22.5% of children are living in poverty. So who are these children and their parents? Sadly, they are your support staff, and yes, some of your teachers are falling into this category. Or they're making slightly higher than the national average and fall into the working poor class. The chart on Page 9 shows poverty rates increasing by 133,000 by 2030. And Page 11 states parent or parents who must pay full price for quality childcare will be using a substantial percentage of their income. While I do not have time to go into this report, I encourage you to read it. I also ask the board members to please consider including a budget for cost of living increase for all our employees. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Westberg. I'm sorry I mispronounced her name a few minutes ago, so I apologize for that. And the other folks that signed up for Citizen Input on the agenda items, we will call on you when that agenda item comes up. Okay, the next item of business will be the Consent Agenda. I need a motion to approve with, as amended, Consent M was added. I believe Consent, or Action K was removed from the agenda. Move to approve.
Second.
Is that correct? And Ms. Zork and Ms. Simcheck. We have a motion and a second for that. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Five-zero.
Mr. Chair, if I might interrupt.
Yes, sir.
By the action of approving the Consent Agenda, you approved the HR part of the Consent Agenda, and so that has resulted in several approvals of some appointments to some administrative positions. I'd like to highlight some of those appointments. These are These are some really important people that are going to be doing some great work for us in our district. Normally, we might have them come to the podium and speak, but we have a rather full agenda tonight.
Thank you.
We're already a little behind schedule, so I'm just going to have them stand and be recognized, and I'll talk about each of them just a little bit. So first, I'd like Dr. Peggy Jones to stand. She's in the back of the room. Dr. Peggy Jones is coming out of retirement to join us as the new executive director of secondary programs. When we were crafting the job description for this new position, we kept thinking about what we would want in an executive director of secondary programs, and we kept coming up with this phrase, "We would want somebody like Peggy Jones." And we couldn't find anybody like Peggy Jones. So I decided to call her up and ask her if she'd come out of retirement, and she did. So I'm very excited to have Dr. Jones join us again as part of our staff, and she'll be leading this... All the executive... As the executive director of secondary programs, she'll be leading all the secondary principals in their work. So congratulations, Peggy, and thank you. Next, I'd like to ask Dr. Deborah Long to stand. If she's in... Yes, she is. She's also in the back. She's currently finishing up her role as director of secondary programs, and now will be taking on a new role as coordinator of equity and instructional support. But this is actually work she's been doing all along, making sure that all of our students have access to high-quality education. And so Debbie's going to be able to focus on that full-time in this new position, so congratulations, Deb. And then Deb Berg. Is Deb Berg... Yes, there she is, right next to the other Deb. Deb's finishing up her role as director of elementary programs, who's now going to go back to the schoolhouse, so to speak, serving as an assistant principal at Felsmer Elementary. We're very excited to have her at Felsmer. She has a wealth of experience in student achievement and making sure that the teachers are doing everything they can in the classroom to make sure those kids get the best education possible, so we're really excited for Deb in that new position, so congratulations. Next, I'll ask Keondra Eberhart to stand up. Keondra is currently serving as a student support specialist at the Alternative Center for Education, but actually, not now, not anymore. She's been promoted to the role of assistant principal at nearby Storm Grove Elementary. Keondra has a great connection with students. She's able to meet their needs on an individual basis all the time, so we're very excited to have her in the role of assistant principal. Congratulations, Keondra. And then Kristin Racine is here in the house. Oh, there she is, yes. So Kristin is finishing up her time at Indian River Academy as an instructional support specialist there. She's really done a great job helping Indian River Academy achieve this turnaround that they've had over the last several years. So we're going to actually ask her to do the same thing in the role of assistant principal at Dodger Town Elementary. So we're very excited to have someone with Kristin's skill set joining the staff at Dodger Town. So Kristin, thank you. Congratulations. And the last one, I believe, for tonight is Eddie Robinson, if Eddie could stand up. Eddie is joining us from St. Lucie County. He's been serving as a dean there for several years. He's going to be an assistant principal at Vero Beach High School. I witnessed Eddie's work firsthand several years ago when I was working in St. Lucie. And he, similar to Keondra, has a way of connecting with students and making sure he can meet their needs and make sure that they're successful, so we're very excited to have him on staff at Vero Beach High School. (applause) Thank you for that indulgent, Mr. Chair.
Okay, sure, sure. Okay, the next item will be, I believe, Action A. Sorry. Action A. Approval of Adobe Cloud software for career and technical education classes for grade nine through 12 for 2017-18 school year. Dr. Rendell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In action item A, we're seeking approval to purchase Adobe software for the instruction of digital design, digital video, and entrepreneurship courses. The software provides the platform that the programs to study curriculum frameworks are written for. Cost to the school district is $63,272.58.
Need a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Justice. Need a second?
Second.
Simcheck. Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none? I need... All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Five-zero. Okay, thank you. Action item B. Approval of change order number two to BGA Incorporated, Con Edison Solutions for Gifford Middle and Sebastian River High School Performance Contracting Projects. Dr. Rendell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, items B and C are kind of together. In action item A, we're asking for approval to the changes to the scope of work in the performance contract with ConEd for the project at Sebastian River High School and Gifford Middle School. And we actually did discuss these changes at the workshop with the board on April 25th. Mr. Morrison, anything to add?
No, sir, nothing at this time. Move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just want to... Since this is my motion, I'll speak to it.
This is for B now. This is for B.
Yes, sir.
Not together with B.
Yes, sir. Bravo only. I just wanted to point out to the public that as you look at this, in case you didn't catch the workshop, this is actually 100% guaranteed to save the district money. If it does not, the Con Edison, it's in the contract, they have to write us a check. So that's what they mean by performance contracting. If they don't perform, then per the contract, they write us a check. Is that right, Mr. Morrison?
That is correct, Mr. Frost.
Thank you.
Any other discussions? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Five-zero. Okay. Item number C. Approval, financial acceptance of final payment for BGA Incorporated at Con Edison Solutions Performance Contracting. Dr. Rendell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is part B, item C of the same package. We're seeking approval for final acceptance and release of final payment in the amount of $474,478 to BGA Incorporated, ConEd Solutions for the Gifford Middle School and Sebastian River High School Performance Contracting Projects. Again, we went through the scope of work and the success of these programs at the April 25th workshop. At that workshop, I guess if you weren't there or weren't watching, you don't know that we actually are already seeing cost savings from these programs. We were actually from the beginning of the project. Final construction cost for these projects totaled $4,744,780.
Need a motion?
Move approval.
Sean. Need a second?
Second.
Mrs. Zork.
Zork.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Five-zero. Next item, action item D. Approval to piggyback Broward County School District bid number 16-038N for purchase and repair of new and replacement band instruments for North and South County Secondary Schools. Dr. Rendell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is one of those items that directly impacts students right away, so I'm very proud to bring this up. We're seeking approval to piggyback and issue purchase orders from the Broward County School District bid for the repair of existing band instruments and the purchase of various replacement and new band instruments from Music Man Incorporated for North and South County Secondary Schools. Total cost impact to the budget is $168,786.19.
Motion to approve.
Okay. Simcheck.
Second.
And... Any discussion?
Yeah, I'm just very excited about when we can improve our music programs. These instruments are usually passed from student to student. They take a beating, and a piggyback purchase is a no-brainer, so I totally support this item.
Any other discussion?
We have to make some cuts, but it's not going to be here.
No, no, it's not going to be there. I hope we can figure out how to keep up with those baritones, though. It seems like we lost a couple of them in the last couple of years there. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Five-zero. Action item E. Approval of owner-contractor agreement to purchase and install playground equipment at Felsmer Elementary in accordance with Seminole County bid 161700030B-RC. Dr. Rendell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In action item E, we're seeking approval for the agreement between the school board of Indian River County and Miracle Recreation Equipment and Design Incorporated to replace, first install, new playground equipment at Felsmer Elementary. The purchase is in accordance with that Seminole County bid. Total cost is $54,730.56, and I believe this was in the five-year capital plan.
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Frost, you can speak. Yes, I just want to say that we discussed this today a little bit during the workshop, and I think that some board members expressed, and myself included, expressed just wanting to make sure that we're... You know, we have... We're not required to provide playgrounds. We're required, I think, to provide a field. That's it, as far as, you know... But we know that recess is important and that students need playgrounds, and so I think we suggested today, Mrs. Zork and I discussed perhaps there being some type of a survey, just to make sure that we're replacing playgrounds fairly. And Mrs. Zork pointed out today that sometimes if a school doesn't have a strong PTA, sometimes a PTA will step in and fund some of those playground improvements, but if a school doesn't have a strong PTA, they may not be able to do that. So, you know, we just want to make sure that all of our students have a good playground to play on. It's important.
We get Mr. Frost.
Just, I'm glad, you know, this is one of the schools in my district. I'm glad to see it getting a playground upgrade. It's time. I appreciate staff prioritizing it, and it's in this year's budget, or if not, it's in the 1.4 that we've set aside for next year, so it's a good spend. Can't do much better.
My question, what do we do with the old equipment that's there? Is there anything we can do with that? I mean, I don't know if it's good or bad, but...
It's a question for probably...
I think from a liability perspective, I don't think we try to pass it on or surplus it. I'd have to check on that, Mr. Cercy.
Okay. Mrs. Zork.
I don't know if it's the case here at Felsmer, but I've noticed at schools that there will be playground equipment for the kindergarten through the first, second grade who play in one area, and then the third, fourth, or fifth graders might have to play out in the field. So a lot of times fundraisers go toward the fourth and fifth graders who also need to have activity to play. So whenever we're... Sometimes when we're adding playground equipment, it's not to replace, it's really to add to what's there. So I don't know if that's the case here.
This is to replace, or this is to add?
To replace.
Replace, okay.
It's my understanding, sir, that kindergarten and first grade, at least kindergarten and first by SRF standards, have to have a separate playground area away from...
Correct.
Is it just K1, or is it K1-2?
K1, I believe. They're different sizes.
Those laws work real good for those fourth and fifth graders, I think, but... All right, we have a motion. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Five-zero. Okay. Approval to renew... This is action item F. Approval to renew School District Indian River County Co-op bid number 2014-23-03 to MacArthur Dairy LLC for milk products. Dr. Rendell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In action item F, we are requesting approval to renew the bid from August 1st of 2017, and for approval to issue all subsequent purchase orders for the purchase and delivery of milk products district-wide. This co-op bid was awarded to Dean Dairy Holdings LLC, MacArthur Dairy LLC. The initial fiscal impact to the school district in Indian River County is $570,000.
Motion to approve.
Simcheck. Okay, and a second?
Second.
Justice. Any discussion?
I do have something on this. This is a one-sheet backup that we had in our backup, and it did not have the original contract, and I know I've mentioned several times, being a newer board member, I'm not new anymore, that I still would like to have if we're renewing a contract to have it so I can look at it. I did ask our attorney today if she had reviewed the contract, so she had given me input on that.
And it would have been back in 2014 when the district originally began piggybacking off of the bid. Yes, ma'am.
But I think the question is, if we're approving it tonight, we probably need to have seen the contract along with this document. Is that what you're saying, or...
Well, we received it Friday. I think it's Friday.
Well, it's because I had requested to have it.
So we're going to have that, and at the next meetings that we have, we're going to have those contracts attached to this. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Is that what you were trying to get to?
That is exactly.
Good deal.
Thank you.
All right, very, very good question, Zork. Thank you. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Five-zero. Action G. Approval of grant application for Individual with Disability Education Act, IDEA, Part B for 2017-18 school year. Dr. Rendell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, items... Action items G, H, I, and J are all very similar. They are all the different plans for the different federal programs that we receive grant funds for. In action item G, we're seeking approval for our plan for the IDEA Part B funds. Fiscal year 1718 preliminary allocation for IDEA Part B preschool is $115,632, and then IDEA Part B entitlement is $3,974,786. We're asking approval for the preliminary plan for those funds.
Need a motion?
Move approval.
Sean.
Second.
Ms. Justice. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question.
Okay.
I've heard school board members from around the state saying that due to the passage of a recent bill, that it is going to result in a significant cut in Title I funds. Is that your understanding, or...
No, sir. The amount of funds is the same. It's how you can spend the funds is a little different, and so it'll require us to adjust the plan as to... Really, employees that are funded under the plan might be assigned to an individual school instead of to a district site, but, you know, we should be able to provide all the same services that we're providing now.
Thank you. I was confused because it's a federal... It's a federal program. I don't know how a state bill would cut the funding to that. So thank you for explaining that. So we'll just have to put more of the money into the schools rather than in administration or...
And how we allocate those resources more will be assigned to school-based personnel, is a fair way to say it.
Great, thank you.
Now, is there something about these funds that are shared with the charter schools on a prorata basis?
So with the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, so students who need services for their learning or cognitive or physical disability, we are to provide services for them. So if they are attending a charter school, the charter school can ask us to come and provide the services, or they can ask for the funding to provide the services, and each charter school does it differently.
Okay. Any other questions?
I was just going to say, so to expand on what you're saying is, let's use, like, a speech pathologist. They could... A charter school could opt to use our speech pathologist?
Correct.
Which probably might be less expensive, but it's up to the charter school to decide?
Correct.
I think most do.
Most use our services.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Yes, ma'am. Mrs. Zork.
The question I had, or something that I had brought up in the workshop, was, you know, I'm seeing here that we have allocated resources, like 7.5 employees for a certain task, and as a board member, I would just like to know what schools are getting these resources? You know, are we... Is there a report that shows that? And I guess I...
So the IDEA funds follow the student. They're based on student need, and we can certainly provide you a list of everyone who's funded or partially funded through IDEA and where they work.
And that probably goes into the next three items that we have, too.
Probably the same.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay, we have a motion by Sean, second by Ms. Justice. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Five-zero. Item number H. Opposed, same sign, five zero. Item number H, approval of 2017-18 Title III Part A Program, English Language Acquisition, Language Enhancement, and Academic Achievement. Dr. Rendell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, in this action item, we're seeking approval for our plan for the English Language Learners Funds that we receive from the federal government. The preliminary budget for this is $127,477.
Need a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, five zero. Okay, and aye, approval of 2017-18 Title I Part A Program, Improving the Academic Achievement of the Disadvantaged. Dr. Rendell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We're seeking approval for our Title I Part A Plan. Title I seeks to help kind of bridge the gap for students who are coming from impoverished backgrounds. So, it's additional funding for us to provide resources for them at their schools. This Title I Part A Plan is to support all of our title schools. The anticipated budget is $4,709,87.
Move approval.
Second.
Need a, I have a motion, Sean, and a second by Ms. Zork. Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, five zero. Okay. Item J, approval of 2017-18 Title II Part A Program Teacher and Principal Training and Recruiting Fund. Dr. Rendell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, action item J refers to the Title II funds that we get from the federal government. Title II is to be used for, really for staff development, training for teachers and administrators and all personnel. The anticipated allocation for the Title II budget is $660,203.
Need a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
And I have a second by Ms. Zork. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I saw in the news that as they developed the education budget, Title II funds were one of those areas where they expected there to be significant cuts on a federal level. You explained it to me, but can you share with folks why we're not concerned about it this year?
Yes, sir, Mr. Frost. So, the federal action takes two years to reach us, or a year to reach us. So, the federal budget, when they, for title programs, when they make decisions on that budget, that's a year away for us. So, the funds that we're asking, you know, for the plan to be approved for are funds that are guaranteed to come. The budget cuts that are being talked about in Washington, D.C. would affect us two years from now, so to speak. So, that's why, you know, we know we will have this amount of money, very, very close to that amount of money, coming forward for this fiscal year because that budget has already been approved by the federal government.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, five zero. Motion carries. Action K, I believe that's one of the ones that were deleted.
Deleted?
Yep, okay, that's gone. Action L, approval of contract with Aon Pharmacy Coalition. Dr. Rendell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In action item L, we're seeking to approve an agreement with Aon to enter into the pharmacy coalition. Board members were presented information about this in the workshop. The express, the cost right now for the Express Scripps is the company that we chose is approximately $500,000. This is a cost-saving measure for our employees. We'll actually be able to get prescription medication at a reduced rate.
Okay. Need a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Justice. Have a motion, a second, discussion.
I just want, I wanted to clear up something. You said it's going to cost us $500, but as I read the blurb here, it says it's going to save us $500,000. I'm hopeful it's the right of...
That's what he meant, I'm sorry.
That's what I meant to say, yes.
Got it, okay.
That sounds...
Need a motion.
That really sounds like a really good program to me. If you look at the cost and all that we pay here, and it's unbelievable the savings that could be had by bidding this thing out. And I'm just really glad that Bill took it upon himself to get it done now. So, it's maybe looked good for us for a change, but... Ms. Zork.
No, I just wanted to mention the same thing.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, five zero. This is good. Action M...
Was deleted.
On to November. Oh, yes, okay. It wasn't marked on my cheat sheet here. Okay, M. Then N, on action item N, I've got a number of folks that want to speak on this. So, the first speaker for citizen input will be Latoya Morgan. Or at least that's what the sign says here.
Yep.
Not here, okay. Okay, the next speaker's going to be, ooh, Maquia Luster.
Luster.
Hope I got that right.
Good afternoon. My name is Maquia Luster. I am a member of Pioneer and Change Incorporated. Under the Professional Standards Evaluation for Section B, Communication and Community Engagement, two of the guidelines are fosters positive working relationships with community, stakeholder groups, and governmental entities, maintains visibility in the community. I feel there is room for improvement in this area. Oftentimes, there is not adequate notification to the community about things going on in the district. There are things posted on the website and called through the automated system, but honestly, honestly, if you want the community involved and the people to be aware of what's going on, you have to make it available to them. As a teacher, I know from experience that these two forms of communication are not enough. Many times, I have to personally make phone calls to parents to ensure that they are aware of programs and events available. Being that there are people in the community who are not parents that would like to be and should be informed on what is happening in the district, there are other methods of communication outside of our current methods of communication that would be more effective. Parents, teachers, and others within the community have always worked together to ensure that students are successful. Therefore, we must make a better effort to inform everyone of events, information, and programs available to our students. There is definitely room for improvement when it comes to working relationships with the community, stakeholder groups, and governmental entities. Pioneer and Change is willing and ready to build a relationship with you and work on getting the community involved. Hopefully, we can discuss outreach at a later date. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Luster. The next one is Kalibia Page. Okay, is that right? Ms. Page? Okay, not here. Anthony Carter, next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Anthony Carter, and I'm also a member of Pioneer and Change Incorporated. And I will be speaking to item N, and I am addressing Section B, Communication and Community Engagement. Under the Professional Standards Evaluation, one of the guidelines are works to increase parental and community involvement in schools and in the district. As a parent, I feel there could be more involvement between the district and the parents. I am an active parent. However, many times, I am still unaware of exactly what is going on in the school system. I am dedicated to ensuring that my children excel and feel more parental and community involvement in the schools and in the district could assist me with meeting this goal. I believe that the community, excuse me, I believe that the community and parental involvement is as important of building a foundation of success for our children. Parents would like to have an open line of communication and more involvement in the district. Thank you.
You want to speak, you were speaking on O also? N and O?
Okay, I'll go ahead, yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so I'd like to speak on item O. I ask that you do not automatically renew today, but vote to review Dr. Rendell's contract next year. The majority of Indian River County School District employees' contracts are renewed annually, and this annual renewals are incentivized for better performance. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. The next speaker is Edward Dillard.
Good afternoon, board members. Mr. Superintendent, I rise today as a member of Pioneer and Change as well. And I'm quite lost, and have, and am at a loss for words, although it won't be evident today, as to how the board can make recommendations for the approval of Dr. Rendell's contract, when there are several things, first of all, that you haven't even gotten as far as some of the, some of the items that was presented. One of the things that I noticed and that was disseminated to us was that Dr. Rendell was able to make his own goals. And in those list of goals, there, I believe, there were five goals. And one of the goals that I would like to speak on specifically is the student achievement. Again, this board has not received, or at the point of evaluation, had not received the FSA scores. So, how can the board adequately determine whether Dr. Rendell, in his own goal setting, determine whether he was able or had met that particular goal? We were able to go to a African-American achievement meeting, and in that African-American achievement meeting, we were presented with some data that was given predating the actual FSA scores for the individual schools. After looking at that, and taking a first look at the cohort for the third-grade ELA, I was appalled. I was taken aback. I was floored. Whatever word you want to use, it really stuck out to me that our African-American students, and I'm speaking as a black man in this county, our African-American students are failing dismally in all subject areas. And the higher the grade, the lower their scores are. Just looking, just to give you some brief numbers here, in the third grade, the African-American achievement, those who scored at least a three and above was 39 percent. That means that the other percentage of our students are failing, and that is abysmal to me. I have a three-year-old that's getting ready to go into the school system in 2018, and I'm very seriously reconsidering whether I will enroll him in the Indian River County School District system. I think I might even want to move, just so that he can get a better education, because according to these numbers, my black son will not get a great education here in Indian River County. Now, how does this relate to Dr. Rendell's performance? Dr. Rendell has been here since 2015, and these numbers have become progressively worse. That number that I quoted you, 39 percent, was in 2015. The next year was 36 percent. We need to do better. And I would implore you, please, ma'am, please, sir, as you get ready to evaluate him, and I'm getting ready to say that, as you get ready to evaluate him, please take all this into consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next speaker, Marshawn Green.
Good afternoon. My name is Marshawn Green. I'm actually the founder of Pioneer and Change. Pioneer and Change is a community action organization, and we work to improve our citizens as well as our community. We hope to foster innovative exchange through cultural, education, civic, and policy programs that advance four goals. The first one being unification, the second being self-sufficiency, the third one, resolution to issues plaguing our community, and the fourth one, creation of future leaders. In making our citizens better, education plays a significant role in accomplishing that mission, and that's one reason why we are active now in our educational system. The first thing that I will be speaking on are the program, the professional standards and goals under Section A, integrity and leadership, maintains high standards of ethics, honesty, and integrity. And Section D, highly developed and high-performing staff, delegates responsibility and authority to staff members appropriate to position each holes and hold each accountable, also promotes high morale and inspires employees to high professional standards. I'm just going to go back to an incident that happened in January 31, 2017, just five months ago, when two teachers, Ralph Vaughn and Allison Moody, rigged online skill certification tests taken by the students. As a result, more than 400 students lost their certifications, and some of them also lost credit as well. In this situation, Vaughn broke confidentiality rules in 2014, 15, and 16 by taking Adobe editing software certification exams. And then later, he instructed the students how to unplug their computers so that their certification tests remained when they came back the next day. And with Moody, Moody took QuickBooks accounting software test twice, and then she instructed her students on how to pass that test. Both of them, I believe, were eligible for bonuses because of that. Well, initially, Dr. Rendell recommended termination, and then later he withdrew that termination, stating that the students are the real victims. And since the students are the real victims, they had already lost the industry certifications, and really, there was no need to fire, fire the teachers. Well, for me, I had a lot of issues because I was a honors graduate, a Golden Seal recipient, as well as a bright future scholars person. And if my teacher had instructed me to do something with my class, I would have done that. However, I would, I feel like it is wrong for those students to be penalized when the students are minors, and they are doing what the teacher instructed them to do. So, my question is, as superintendent, the duty is to hold the teachers and the administration accountable for their actions. We have the code of conduct for the students, and if they do not comply, then they are held accountable. But who is holding the administration accountable? I ask you to consider that while reading. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Green. The next speaker, Ladonna Williams.
Good afternoon. My name is Ladonna Williams. I'm a concerned parent and also a member of Pioneer and Change. And just to piggyback on the conversation that's going on now as far as reading Dr. Rendell for his annual review, I have a huge concern, too, that it is not evident in Section D is the highly developed and high professional staff. Two of the guidelines are providing leadership to attract and retain high-qualified employees, execute and sound personal procedures and practices. As we can see, this floor has been filled tonight with concerns that we are underemployed and not rewarding the staff that we have now currently up under us. But also, I wanted to know, how do you take a principal and move a principal from a four, a three-year D school, which is Elizabeth Tetro from Dodger Town Elementary, move her from a D school of three years to a B school, and don't retain the principal that had that school held at an A and B average for three years? You didn't renew her contract, but you moved a teacher from a Dodger Town Elementary School that held a D rating for three years over to a B school. So, my concern here is that we're not using and executing sound personal decisions and practices when we're rewarding and moving these teachers around in the school system. Also, the new Dodger Town principal is a St. Lucie County principal. Another concern is that, is the qualified pool of applicants in our county that are overlooked for these positions. This pool of applicants even include people in the black community. We have educated black community members that are trying to seek positions in Indian River County, and coming in now as a return person to Indian River County, I was told there's no place for African-Americans in the school system. And I'm highly educated and qualified, and will be applying for several positions, and I would like to see it that's held true and accountable in the school district. Also, the community would like to see more transparency with the job requirements and hiring and placement of our determinations. I'm also speaking on O, if I can go ahead on and speak on O.
Go ahead.
As we all would be stating here, that we would like to have, we're asking that you do not automatically renew Dr. Rendell's contract today. We vote for Dr. Rendell's contract next year, that the majority of Indian River County School District employees' contracts are renewed on an annual basis, that his should be reviewed when it expires in June, that you all should take action to renew his and extend it for a year with further review, but don't automatically let his evaluation and contract roll over for another year without reviewing it, on behalf of our community also. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Williams, yes. The next one, Yasmin Lovelace. You're speaking on N and O.
Just O.
Just O, okay.
Should we wait until we get to O then?
I'm sorry?
We're still on N?
Yeah.
Go ahead and speak, N and O, that's fine. Justice is an input anyway, so...
Good evening. My name is Yasmin Lovelace.
Am I safe on that? Excuse me just a minute, ma'am. Are we safe on that?
The existing procedures of the school board are to have individuals speak either at the beginning of the meeting during public comment, or on the individual action item.
I stand corrected, then.
Our procedure would call for, if someone is just speaking on item O, for them to wait until we arrive at that item O.
No problem.
Sorry.
Thank you, Yasmin.
My bad, my bad. Okay. The next speaker is Jackie Warrior on N and O. What are you going to speak on? You got to speak on N.
I got to speak on N.
Okay, coming to N. I'm sorry, Ms. Lovelace. My bad.
Thank you. My name is Jacqueline Warrior. I want to be real clear, first of all, that tonight I am not, thank you, that I am not addressing you as a member of the Executive Committee of the NAACP, but as a private citizen, just as I have on numerous occasions prior to my affiliation with that organization. As a community member and a taxpayer, I believe that I have the right to provide input to the evaluation of the leader of our school district. Historically, at least in my historical span of reference, this has been done solely by the school board. But tonight, I wish to express concerns regarding the school board's process, the evaluation process. There are apparently, if I understand this accurately, two parts to the evaluation. One, the professional standards piece, and two, the superintendent's goals. I respectfully suggest that the board consider revising the professional standards piece, and two, the superintendent's goals. I respectfully suggest that the board consider Um, I respectfully suggest that the board consider revising the professional standards tool in the near future. I think it's, um, highly subjective and lacks clarity in many areas. I think it's a very weak tool, and that you could do a lot better. Uh, it would serve both, both the person you're evaluating better, and I think yourself and, um, the community. There are, um, the other part is the, the superintendent's goal reports, and I'll probably get jumped on for after saying this, but I was looking at the, um, report piece that was done for, I think it was the May twenty-third, when the superintendent presented goals, and I realized that a lot of the data was missing, and that you were going to be asked to do evaluations with a, a significant part of the data missing. Uh, because I look a lot at the student achievement parts, and those weren't the only parts. Um, again, it was student achievement data, outcome data not available, outcome data not available, outcome data not available. Um, as I said, that concerns me. I know that at some point, probably a few days ago, some of that data came in, whether that gave board members time to adequately re- review and analyze it, I don't have any idea. The one thing that I also noticed was that as the school district puts out, you know, what we, what we accomplished during that time, we rolled the, um, it's, we rolled in some schools that I think charter schools, with the exception of St. Pete's this year, and the magnet schools are carrying the water for the district when it comes to grades, because otherwise we score below the state average. And I don't think the state of Florida has a very high average, um, overall in the first place. Um, I, okay. Um, although, as I said, although I assume that the student, the superintendent's, hurry up, student, superintendent's goals are included in the evaluation, evaluation process, I'm not certain that this assumption is accurate. Um, and I wonder, and I'm asking the board, did you consider that data? If all, and I'm almost certain that I will not agree with all the scores of each board member, but I do hope and expect that each board member's evaluation scores will reflect the reality of the status of our district, and we look forward to those documents as they become public domain in a few days.
Thank you, Ms. Warrior. Okay. Uh, let's see, that's all on N. Okay. I guess we need to move to item N then, right? Are we, that's all we've got of this, right? Okay. So the, uh, the issue at hand right now is the approval of the superintendent's, uh, two thousand sixteen, seventeen, uh, composite evaluation of professional standards, uh, and two thousand sixteen, seventeen goals as satisfactory. Dr. Rendell has served the School District of Indian River County as superintendent since July first, two thousand fifteen. As per his employment contract, each board member is required to independently evaluate the superintendent utilizing the professional standards and goals adopted by the board. The chairman is charged with bringing forth the final composite, uh, adoption. The, um, the points that we put down for, um, rating the superintendent were four points for exceeding expectations, three points for satisfactory performance, uh, reasonable, uh, progress towards satisfactory was two points, and unsatisfactory, one point. Each board member had a set of goals, had a set of criteria. We reviewed all the information that the young lady just talked about, um, and we rated the board, or the superintendent, I'm sorry. And the, the net final total for the superintendent, the average of all the, uh, of all the, uh, reviews was three point four two. So that's the, the composite score for the superintendent, and I need to get a motion for approval.
Move approval.
Ms. Justice.
Second.
Shaun. Okay. Any discussion?
Do you like to speak to Marshawn, Ms. Justice? Because I do have quite a few things I'd like to say.
Why don't you go ahead and speak?
Thank you.
Seem ready?
Um, yeah. Well, as it becomes publicly available, I'm sure you'll all see my comments, so there'll be no surprises here, and there's no surprises with Dr. Rendell. Um, I agree with, um, comments made by our most recent speaker, that this is a process in need of addressing, and I think Dr. Rendell even agrees with that. Um, it's kind of, uh, a hodgepodge of, of things that we've thrown together, and probably not the best instrument for evaluating our, our CEO. Um, and I agree that it should be focused on student data. Uh, it was unfortunate this year that the student data were, uh, delayed. We should definitely have those ahead of time, so that's something that we can look at as a process. Um, and actually, Dr. Rendell previously asked us to move our process back so that we would have those data, but, uh, the state was not on target with this. So, uh, to his credit, he would love to be, uh, weighed on the data, at least, uh, that's, that's why we've moved it back, and perhaps we need to move back a couple more weeks, because I believe I met with Dr. Rendell on Monday, and the data was available at the end of the week, or early the next week, or something along those lines. So, um, it, it would have been nice to have those data, however, they were pretty much right where I thought they would be, based on third grade and kind of, uh, what the, um, I-ready grades were, were saying, you know, we would, we would achieve, um, with a few exceptions. So, I also had concerns with, um, the, the issue of personnel, and that's why I, I rated a little lower on that, because I feel as though, you know, that, that was the one, um, growing edge, if you will, I felt, an opportunity, uh, for Dr. Rendell to have, uh, handled that situation differently. As a former teacher, as a parent, um, that's a tough one to, to have seen processed, and I appreciate the comments from our speakers tonight. Treasure Coast Elementary, I will say this, um, I was excited to see those data come in, and even more excited that we promoted the principal. We hadn't fired her, we hadn't released, uh, her, we promoted her into a position of teaching others. I think she went from like thirty-six up to seventy-eight, or something crazy like that. It was, it was phenomenal. So for her to now be, um, out there working with other principals to, uh, to achieve those same goals, I'm, I'm super psyched about that. That's, uh, speaking to the genius of leadership on that particular issue. Um, I think Dr. Rendell has, has a good eye for talent. I know that he's committed to diversity, if, you know, if you don't believe me, look around, you know, it's, it's, uh, it's, there, there is a place, and I hope that, I hope that that is the message in the community, that there is opportunity here, uh, because it's tough. And I've said this in the paper and, and things like that, but it's, it's, you know, you, you don't want to go somewhere where you're not, and it's tough to empty and, uh, to enter an empty room. So by, by having, you know, the, the handout, um, in, in, in offers, you know, we make offers at, uh, at, um, colleges. So, I know that there are things that are, that are right. I think we're on the right track, and, um, the, the minor things, I, I'm satisfied, and I'm glad to see that that's the calculation. So, that's, those are my comments.
Ms. Justice?
Thank you, Chairman Sorsy. Um, I would echo Mr. Frost's, um, comments about the evaluation tool. I do think we need a new one. I expressed that to Dr. Rendell. Um, I have taken some time to look at the evaluation tools used, um, at some other districts in the state and actually around the country, and I know it can be improved upon. Um, so I will be bringing that forward to the board, and hopefully we'll be able to have a discussion about that in the future. Focusing specifically on some of the comments tonight and moving forward with the evaluation, I have never heard, I, I, I personally have not heard this, but I would imagine, um, that Dr. Rendell would want to be made aware if someone has said, if someone has told you, Mrs. Williams, that there is no place for African-American employees in our school district. I have not heard that said. I have not, um, felt that sentiment either, to be honest with you. I've only been here, you know, not a full year yet, but, um, I would imagine that Dr. Rendell or our Human Resources would like to be made aware if someone has made that comment to you, um, if you could maybe let them know a little bit more about that, because I don't believe there's any place in this school district for someone who believes that. Um, so, as a board member, that's kind of my feel on it, um, and, um, I'm sure Dr. Rendell's door is open if you'd like to go and speak with him about that. Mrs. Basora, the principal at Treasure Coast Elementary, was, um, promoted to the Executive Director of Elementary Education. I think that's an exciting change. Um, I think the key word for me this year has been change, and we have seen a lot of change, and change is hard, and everyone wants change, and I agree, the African-American achievement number, the numbers, I don't, I, I, for the life of me, I've never been able to understand how schools an A school, and yet you have nineteen percent of your African-American students reading on grade level in a grade. It just doesn't make any sense to me. If I was a principal, I wouldn't want the A. So, um, I think we're seeing a lot of change, new principals, new, um, administrators, and, um, in my evaluation, you will see that, um, I try to speak to that, that I support the change, that I believe that we need it, that I believe we need to do a better job of serving our students, and that I'm excited about the work that Dr. Rendell and Ms. Dampier are doing, um, and all of our administrators and, and trying, and teachers in trying to serve student needs. And that, that is it, sir. Thank you.
Ms. Warrior.
Well, I think Dr. Rendell and I had a very candid conversation on June thirteenth. I did lay out, you know, areas that, going through the evaluation, that I felt that needed improvement that I've seen over the past six months. Um, I was very open and honest with him, and it, tonight, whenever we were going over the strategic plan, I see, pretty well, every item that was on, sorry, um, that evaluation that I had highlighted, that I felt was unsatisfactory or needs improvement, um, I see it here in our five-year plan. So, I'm very optimistic that going forward over the next, even this coming year, to see those changes. So I, you know, I do feel that, uh, we have a huge problem with communications in our district. I feel like it's, it's at the, you know, here in this building, I feel communications could be better, out in the schools, on the school sites, it could be better, in our, um, with our parents, it could be better. So that was something that I really felt that, something that we can approve on, and that's, that's what we're also hearing tonight from the community. A second area that I really thought that we need to work on is just our culture and our climate, and that was mentioned in the evaluation, that, you know, we have to go back to the golden rule, we have to treat people, we have to treat our employees, the people that work in our district, the way that we would want to be treated, the way that we would want our kids to be treated, our moms and dads to be treated, even if it's, you know, if we have to terminate an employee and let them go, it's not just we terminate them. If they are a professional in our district, we owe it to them to explain why they're being terminated and not renewed for contracts, so that they can grow from that and perhaps come back a better employee in our district. So I had, um, expressed some concerns of that, but, um, like, um, Dr. Warrior said, the evaluations probably will be public in a few days, so I'm not going to, um, go through the complete evaluation that I, um, went through with Dr. Rendell. I, I was pretty tough on him, and he's still nice to me, so I appreciate that. But I do feel like we're progressing towards satisfactory. I don't, I'm not satisfied. I can't use that word, that I'm satisfied. So I, I'm very optimistic over the next year that we're going to see more improvements come from this plan here, so.
Uh, just to make sure that when you folks come to that podium over there, five board members hear you, and the superintendent hears you, and I think you can tell from some of the things, some actions that have taken place in this district, we act on those things. We don't address you when you come over here, uh, but we do hear what you're saying, and, we have folks that listen. That's all I can tell you. And we're trying to, we're trying to get better, and, and if there's anybody in here that will tell me that we're not better today than we were last year, I don't want you to raise your hand, because I may be embarrassed, but, but we are making progress, and that man is leading us. He is leading us, and if you have problems with him, come right on in. I'm going to tell you, his doors, most of the time it's open, um, but he welcomes your input. You know, if, if we don't know what the problem is, we can't solve it. So I would encourage you to do, uh, just that. And each one of us sat down with the superintendent and, and went over every one of the, uh, every one of the review items with him, and some of it might not have been pleasant, I don't know, but he, uh, like Laura says, he was still friends after he left, but that's a job that we have to do, and we listen to you. I'm promising you, we listen to you, and we'll try to make, uh, we'll try to make all the positive changes that we can. But that's where we are today, and, uh, I need to have a, would you like to say something?
Yeah, I just, I wanted to, uh, jump in. I don't really want to say much, because I, I view it as a, um, it's perception of each person that came to the podium, and each one of us has our own perception, perception of, uh, the job and performance. Uh, Dr. Rendell, um, there were some issues. He has, uh, weaknesses and strengths, like all of us, and I did discuss those with Dr. Rendell. Um, something that a, a speaker did speak on, and one of the things, uh, communication is very important. But I, I, something I did mention to Dr. Rendell, and, um, and a speaker had mentioned it about qualified personnel, that is something that concerns me, fact or fiction, you know, feelings aren't facts, or facts are feelings. Either way, there is a perception by many changes in, uh, you know, leadership, and then recruiting from outer district. I have a problem with that. I, I just can't imagine, and, and I don't know, because I'm not interviewing, so I, I cannot say fairly, but, um, just statistically, um, it would rather see more promotion from within. Also, um, the tool is horrible when, um, you know, I, you know, not that I streamlined anything, but we didn't even have numbers. I don't know how the person before me did it last year, and I had to run around and tell everybody, at least do four, three, two, one, and then one board member did one, three, two, four, and we had to, no, one means equal this. But, you know, we can't talk to each other, so I really do feel that we should, um, collectively, uh, discuss the tool that we evaluate our, uh, head administrator in this district. I also feel that a lot of the things that are not on the paper is in a verbal conversation that I, I'm sure each one of you had. You know, you put a goal down, and yet I have a very personal, um, situation that may have occurred with a student, that we cannot talk publicly, that you can't write on that tool, and although maybe there might be a satisfactory or, or, you know, I, I used to tell my kid when he'd go to school, you know, he could never get that five, he was always a three, and I used to say, you know, you're not a number. Um, I just really don't even like that system. Listen, this is the deal, the man has a contract. There's five of us that are elected, and we have the power to hire or fire our superintendent, whoever she or he may be. And the, the bottom line is our personal perception of that person's work is our interface and what we see. And we offer an, a public opportunity to come to the podium, they can call us, you know, anyone can call us and tell us, uh, how they feel about that. But the tool is not a very good tool, and, um, I do like to hear input. I'm glad that people showed up, I'm glad that people stayed in a very long meeting and, and had some input. But those are my, some of my concerns, as I said, was, uh, communication was also an issue. Um, I did hear somebody speak about, you know, people who aren't parents, and, and that struck a note to me tonight about not being a pa, I think it was a young lady, that if they're not parents, uh, here, but I thought of some of the ways, we have Channel Twenty-Eight, and we have the Bob Suss Show, and, uh, but not everybody gets that, so there is room for improvement, because there's a lot of people. I mean, we're lucky, our taxpayers, although some of them do, say, I don't have a kid, why should I pay those taxes? But, you know, I think that there's probably room in improvement for non-parents as well to get the message. Uh, I can't tell you what that is, because I've just read a couple of things, but, uh, you know, I, um, will tell you, because I, I started my, um, uh, seat with a different superintendent, and I do see improvement. We've had the best relationship with charter, I, I believe. I think that's a, a work in progress. Uh, I've seen some really good, um, you know, although I've, I've commented on some leadership changes, I've seen some really good leadership changes. Um, and sometimes when you have somebody, and I don't want to say anything against, you know, a different superintendent, but when they're born and raised and bred in the county, you end up, you know, there is a room to have favoritism. And so what Dr. Rendell brings from outside the county is he was able to come in and make some, some good judgment calls, but, as I said, it is a concern to myself and some people that, um, where are qualified people? We have to have qualified people, too. Um, everybody wants to see a career ladder in their job. Everybody begins with an organization looking for career ladders, and maybe legitimate, as I said, I don't sit in these interview processes, but that would be something, um, if not, and I said this even, if not even for the political climate, how it looks. not, and I said this even, if not even for the political climate, how it looks, it's just, you know, be mindful that, try to promote from within. And, so, you know, obviously, they'll be public, but as I said, what's written on the page is, is not even in, I feel, and I would imagine what some of my board members have said, that when you have these private discussions with your administrator, there are situations that you can even put on that paper, and you can't repeat here. So, we do, I just know that we put a good effort into it, and it, it's a process that, through no fault of his, because it came, he came here with that process, needs to be revamped for, because everybody needs to be critiqued, as painful and uncomfortable in that seat it is. And I will say to Dr. Rendell, and I've said this before, I've served as, served as a legislator and legislator in a city council, where we did it up here, and that was really messy. So, as uncomfortable as these things are in public, you know, we try to keep some professional guidelines for ourself, but we as a board are in a sad need of fixing that process. That's it for me.
And I wanted to say one other thing. Between now, and I believe it's the end of July, we are going to be in the process of developing new goals for the superintendent for next year. I believe that's the case, and so any input that you folks want to have, call Ms. Simcheck, if you would.
Mr. Dale.
Or Ms. Justice, I'm sorry.
No, no, no. Well, you can call me if you want to call me, absolutely, my number, I mean. My understanding was that going forward, Thursday night will be an important part of that, that the strategic plan would be, the strategies and the measures of those strategies, the measures of success will be the guiding force for this school district. And I think that's so important, because no longer is it the superintendent setting goals, but it's the community coming together and saying, this is what's important to us, this is the commitment by the district to make that happen. So, again, I would encourage everyone to come out to the town hall and to, to look through the strategic plan and to give their feedback. It's so important, and we absolutely, and I hope that you see, again, that we are really trying to make sure that we are engaging the community, and I am, I would just like to say, I am very thankful to have the community's support and to have the, to have people coming up and telling us what's important to you and taking a part in the process.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor and a second to approve the superintendent's score of 3.42. Is there any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, five zero. The next item is item O, and now, please take, this is for citizen input.
Chair Ms. Justice. Do we have a number of citizen input requests to speak, because I would like a bathroom break, if we're able to have one, sir.
I don't want to keep this lady waiting too much longer, I mean, I've already called her, well, we don't want to keep you waiting either, so.
Sorry, I apologize.
Will you be around for a few more minutes?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to take a five-minute break, we'll, we'll be back at eight o'clock.
Thank you, sir.
Citizen input.
Citizen input.
Where's Ms. Yasmin? Oh.
Your left. And the first speaker is Ms. Lovelace, on item O.
On item O?
Okay, good.
Good evening. I am a concerned parent and a retired educator from Georgia, and I feel that the board should not automatically renew Dr. Rendell's contract, but look at it when it comes for review in June. As a teacher myself, we had to, our contracts were reviewed annually, so I feel that his should be reviewed annually as well, as the other districts in Indian River County, as the administration and teachers are renewed as well. So, I urge the board to look at this and do not do an automatic review, but look at it in June, review it again, and consider going annually with the superintendent's contract. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Lovelace. Okay, the next speaker will be Jackie Warrior on item O.
Take my gum out.
Only O. Park her up, and let's go.
My request too, I, when I read this item O, it was really hard to understand, I, I mean, to understand, stand in many ways. Is that a legal way that you have to write it, that the board will, the purpose is to discuss whether to take no action? And, I mean, you know, it's like, is that, is that legal language?
That's what the contract says.
Okay, okay.
Am I correct on that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. It, it's actually strange, because to vote means that you take an action, and that to take no action, if I'm wrong here, automatically allows that Dr. Rendell's contract is for three years, ending the, in, in 2018, June, the end of the next school year, but that if you vote to take no action, it will roll over an additional year into 2019. I would request again, and I'm not asking that you terminate Dr. Rendell, because I probably would have given something like progressing towards, you know, change to more, like I think what Ms. Zork said in terms, I think some things have changed, I think a lot of things, even hearing, especially from you, Mr. Cersei, that people on the board listened to you was impressive, and will hold you to that, and feeling like, I hear that more and more, and not feeling like Dr. Rendell. But again, like I said, I'm not asking that you non-renew him at the end of three years, but I don't know why you would vote not to review him at the end of three years, and then just add another year to his contract. And, and even it says you could do more, I guess you could add a year or six years or whatever you wanted, and we could talk about that, but to just sort of vote to take no action to automatically extend, to me, just seems inappropriate, I guess is one word for it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, that's the citizen input. Okay, the action item O, approval of superintendent's employment agreement renewal. The purpose of this item is to discuss whether to take no action and allow Dr. Rendell's employment agreement to automatically extend for one additional year to June 30th, 2019. As for the conditions of the agreement, the school board can take, can also take action to extend the superintendent's contract for one or more years beyond June 30th, 2018, on terms and conditions, including compensation to be determined by mutual consent. So, we need...
Move approval?
Second.
To do nothing?
Sean? And who, Justice, okay?
I was going to do parliamentary inquiry and all sorts of things.
Okay.
I'm just not going to do that.
Ms. Zork.
Okay. Ms. Zork, if you could help me, to prove to do nothing, it automatically goes to 2019, but to take action, we could say, let's extend it to June 30th, 2018. Is that correct?
Nineteen.
Twenty. That's not what I'm proposing.
The current employment contract with Dr. Rendell expires on June 30 of 2018. So, Dr. Rendell's contract currently ends June 30 of 2018. There is an automatic rolling provision in the employment agreement, which uses June 30 of this year as the trigger. So, by June 30 of this year, if the board did absolutely nothing, excuse me, if you didn't have a meeting this evening, and you did absolutely nothing, come June 30 of this year, Dr. Rendell's employment agreement would automatically extend for an additional year to June 30 of 2019. Now, of course, the board can take affirmative action, that's basically doing nothing, if no one came to a meeting in the month of June. You could take affirmative action. You could take affirmative action to extend affirmatively Dr. Rendell's contract to June 30 of 2019. You could take affirmative action to extend Dr. Rendell's contract to a date beyond that, you know, with discussion with Dr. Rendell about that longer extension. You could also take action to stop the automatic rolling. That is one of the options in the employment agreement.
Matt?
Explain to me automatic rolling, so, tell me what that, because I think I know what it means, but I just want to make sure I understand this.
That the contract term that is currently June 30 of 2018 would, if you took absolutely no action, the term of the, of Dr. Rendell's employment agreement would automatically extend to June 30 of 2019. So, there would be two fiscal years in front of us.
And, just one more.
Go ahead.
In years past, in the past two years, we, or last year was the first time, so, we took action last year, or the board did, and they extended it one year and didn't roll it in. Okay, explain that to me.
No ma'am, the original employment agreement with Dr. Rendell was a three-year agreement, and there was specific provision in the contract that nothing happened as far as extending the contract after the first year. Everybody needed to have a moment to get used to each other and, and determine the working relationship. So, after that first year of employment as a superintendent, there was nothing, no extension, no action that was taken with regard to the term of the agreement. It remained at June 30 of 2018. We're now in the second year of the employment agreement, and that's when the trigger kicks in to either do nothing, and it automatically will roll forward until June 30 of 2019, or take affirmative action to do something about extending that term.
So, I, I heard like a motion, but I didn't hear a second, but the thing is, is that the, it was not a, this is not an item to do nothing. This was, and, and as I said, when, in May, when this, when we were approaching the June, there was no talk about an evaluation, there was no talk about this automatic renewal. I brought this up and said, we got an email from the attorney, and we should discuss this. So, as it was, then, all the standards and the goals and everything was brought in, the superintendent did his presentation without data until the data followed, and so now we have till the 30th, and we did the evaluation, which we did last year, and I'm just explaining to, or help Ms. Zork, that we did last year, you know, N, we did not have to do O. O is on here as a discussion, as a board, do, but if nobody said anything, it would have rolled over autom- automatically. rolled over automa, automatically. If nobody brought to the attention of this board, it would've rolled over automatically. If we discussed tonight, which we haven't discussed yet, but I know you made, I don't know if I heard a second, we could, we could do nothing and it rolls over, or, you know, we could discuss to review the contract, you know, not do an automatic rollover, but, and, and I would lean towards that except for I have a couple of issues that, that would stop me from doing that, or I would need clear direction and discussion from my peers. If you don't do an automatic rollover, and, and somebody brought up, it was good enough for the teachers, one year, but the thing is, is that if you don't discuss it now, you will have, as of Ju, June 30th next year, you will have, you know, no superintendent.
Right.
That's the first thing. And with 64 applications, and, and I know people know that's a very busy process, you can't wait till next June, or, I mean, you could, I just think that's not a good place to put our district in. I don't think that that's a good place to put a family man in either, I don't operate like that, you know, personally. I don't think that June is the deadline for me. I don't think that's right. I don't know that an automatic renewal, um, and, I, I don't know that I'm comfortable with that, but I, I'm just throwing it out there for discussion if that clarifies the topic. I'm not comfortable with waiting till June, that is for sure, and I don't know if I'm comfortable with an automatic renewal, I'd like to hear input. But that is, those are the clauses, and as I said, if we wait till June, um, which we may have valid reason or not, we may say kudos, but you're putting somebody in a position and you're also putting the district in a position of being helmless, and I don't feel that that's a good position to be, you know, to, either way. And I, and I don't feel that Dr. Rendell is doing that type of job to even consider that, but I just know that things happen fast. So, um, you know, we've had a two-years experience, and, and I would say this last year was probably the roughest year, but I don't, you know, I don't, I don't hold Dr. Rendell responsible then. I feel, I personally have had bad decisions by courts, I personally feel there were bad decisions by some courts that doctor, you know, certain, searching things, but, because I agreed to the process, I, I agree with that. So, for me personally, I think some of the, some of the things that have happened that people consider as bad decisions, I, I don't feel were. But that's my, again, my personal perception. So, I throw that out for, for discussion so that it's fully vetted in the public and they get to hear, and I cannot talk to anyone else, so, you know, as I said, we've got a very bad tool, we've raided, we can't talk to each other, and, you know, I don't think anybody should get a free pass without discussion, at least.
Ms. Frost.
Thank you. And just to kind of clear it up, I agree with the sentiment of, you know, teachers being on annual contract, but the, the fact is, when a legislative body, whether it's a city council or the county commission, if they were to go to their city manager or county manager, or in this case, the school district were to go to their superintendent and say, you're on an annual contract, what that essentially means is you should be looking for work elsewhere. So that's the signal that that sends, and I'm not comfortable with that for, you know, Dr. Warrior actually brought up the fact that there is some positive change here, and I see the positive change, I see that we're moving in the right direction. So, you know, you have to give change time to work, I think, like, there are studies that say it takes up to eight years to affect positive change. So, I, I'm not, no, 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 I see your faces. There are some school districts, and I kind of follow this around the state too, to see what, you know, what other, what other people are doing, and one board recently extended the contract through 2021, which I think is a bad idea because that's, the entire board could be gone by then. So, they've essentially allowed the superintendent to run, you know, to basically pick, to, to run roughshod over the school board at that point, so I'm not comfortable with that. I am comfortable, I'm very comfortable with going through 2019 because really that's another year. And another thing to remember is we have, it's within the contract, this board could say, wake up tomorrow, or not tomorrow, well, we could wake up tomorrow, well, or two days later, call a meeting or whatever, to stay within the sunshine. Well, th, this board could decide within the next couple of weeks that Dr. Rendell's services are no longer required, and according to Florida statute, we're only required to pay severance without saying why or things along those lines of 120 days. So we could, that's what we're on the hook for, is roughly five months, right?
Twenty weeks.
Twenty weeks.
Twenty weeks.
Twenty weeks, thank you. So, so it's not as though, even though we're extending the contract, that we're, we're bound by that, but it is a good faith effort to our, to our superintendent to say, we're, we're pleased with some of the change we see and, and we wanna let some of it take hold. So, I'm comfortable with it automatically rolling through 2019, June 30th, 2019. If you want me to withdraw my motion and make an affirmative, when I can do that, but that's, that's what I'm comfortable with, I'm not comfortable with 2020. So, I, I think that this is, this strikes a good balance between creating the opportunity for the change to take hold.
I just have a question. You know, I really felt that this evaluation was a good tool to really bring to light, you know, areas that I felt strongly that Dr. Rendell should work on, and, you know, and it was an opportunity to say what I really like, what you have done. So how do we keep, if, if we automatically move it to 2019, do we have another evaluation in a year?
Yeah.
And then?
Absolutely, every year.
And it's just like this?
Yep. Well, it'll be even better because we're gonna start using the strategic plan, which is kind of always, that's, that's the private sector model, right? The board develops a strategy in cooperation with the CEO and the staff, and then the strategy is implemented and you determine how well the strategy has worked based on the results. So you, you have your strategy, you tie your, your superintendent's goals to the, to the strategy, and then you hold him accountable for reaching those goals, and then every year we evaluate him, and I'm, I'm confident that this board is gonna have a much better instrument in the last year, and thank you for making it better last year and moving it, moving the process forward, but I think that there's still room, we're on the right track, and we are going to revisit this next year, and then if, if, you know, if it pleases the board at that point to not renew or whatever, then Dr. Rendell will receive that message, but I think the message today is that, you know, this board stands behind the superintendent and the changes he's made, and we're expecting better things next year.
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry. Well, I wanted to, and the other thing is that if, if I, and I'm going from memory, I'll have the attorney or even Dr. Rendell correct me, but the part of provisions of the contract is, he provides a physical that he's in good health and that he also achieves a satisfactory or above evaluation, and he did achieve that this evening. So, by no means are we, and, and I, it's so rough to do this in public, but by discussing this though, we have to show, it, it's important that we discuss all options, what they mean and that the public understands, as, um, and I have never liked one-year contracts for teachers, I made that clear the last thing, but I, I understand that, I mean, if, there was something that I, that's just a personal thing for me. But I think that as long as we vet this in, in public, I also will actually, as we discuss this, because of the, of the additional year, there is a possibility of a majority new board sitting here. Could happen, you know, I mean, 'cause 2018 are elections for three Cs. And that, as I said, I, I would like to guarantee stability for that board as well, at least for, for the opportunity of leadership, you know, because there's a lot, as you can both understand, and we also felt it too, as the moving parts go on in your new position yourself, that is, you know, something that we would be removing from that for, for a future board so that they could, you know, make their own evaluations. As I said, he did receive a satisfactory, so he's, you know, again, fine, so I do understand your argument for 2019.
Ms. Justice.
I would echo Mr. Frost when he said that he'd like to see some of the changes, what, what the impact will be of those changes, and I would just say too, I, I may not have been on this board, but I certainly have been a part of this school district for many years, and I have never seen, to be honest, Dr. Warrior, I have never seen a superintendent address some of the issues about achievement and the achievement gap in our district and his staff, I, I haven't seen anyone do that before in the way that we are doing it, to engage the community as we plan to, to directly address these issues and to try to make a change and a difference. So, again, I support it, I applaud it, it's been a focus for me as a parent and as a school board member, and, you know, I, that's why I seconded in the motion tonight, and, you know, I would say that it's, I understand the criticism and I understand that everyone wants to speak out, but also when you know that someone is working to make change and is actually implementing processes to make change, that it's also important to make sure that you let people know that you recognize that and that you support it. That was at the, and that, and that's at the direction of the board. That is at the direction of the board, the superintendent takes, takes direction from the board on that issue. So, that's it. Mr. Cersei.
Have something else?
No, I just, my biggest concern is accountability, you know, I just don't wanna lose that accountability. You know, I wanna be able, and I don't wanna have to wait a year, honestly, you know, for an evaluation, for Dr. Rendell to really understand that I'm serious about these issues that I see that are concerns. So I, you know, I just wanna make sure that I'm getting confirmation from the board that in, you know, in a year, we're gonna have another evaluation.
It's my understanding, six months, you have, there's a six-month evaluation as well, is that correct?
Discussion with the board, superintendent.
Privately though, there's no board action.
There's no board action, but the board members are expected to evaluate the superintendent six months through the year and, and have a conversation.
That's your option.
If you would like to do that, I mean, I will take that seriously, as a board member, I took the evaluation very seriously, you know, and, and I will have my six-month evaluation.
I will not be supporting Sean's motion. This, this board is a board to, this is an action item, it's to take action and to take no action, I don't agree with that. There are too many things, and, and I support superintendent, but, but there are too many things that were not available, the information wasn't here, too many things like that for us to be able to clearly evaluate the progress. So I will not be supporting Sean's, uh, motion.
Chairman Cersei, I don't understand.
I have the floor.
Point of order.
I have the floor. I will not be supporting that for us to be able to take no action. We have a contract, and any time during the year, if, if it's amenable to the superintendent, we can bring that contract up and review it, is that correct, Madam Attorney?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
And so when we get the results of all of these state exams and how the, those kids are progressing, we can, with mutual consent from the superintendent, we can bring this back up, we can discuss and review the contract, but to take no action, and that's what it says here, is, is not something that I'm willing to put my name on. So, now, Ms. Justice.
Mr. Frost, would you amend your motion to, would you consider amending your motion to allowing the contract to continue to 2019?
Actually, for parliamentary, it's easier if I just withdraw it, right, Ms. DiAgresta?
If the second will withdraw.
Just withdraw the motion, and we withdraw the second, then I make a new one.
My second point of order would be, Mr. Cersei, Chairman Cersei, I don't understand, we, in action N, we unanimously approved 5O, the evaluation that we did.
That's fine, that's fine.
That's a different order, that's a different item.
That's a different, total, different.
That has nothing to do with the contract. Performance, one is performance and one is a contract.
That's correct.
Mr. Chairman, I withdraw my motion.
Is the second withdrawn? Ms. Justice?
Yes, sir.
Okay, withdrawn, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion. Recognize to make a motion.
Okay.
Thank you. I move that this board take action to extend Dr. Rendell's contract through June, June 30th, 2019.
Second.
And I have a second on that too, Ms. Justice. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
The alternative, I, I'm not confident in supporting moving to 2019, but I will, for lack of clarity of an alternative, will probably be supporting the motion because I, I can't, because, because I would, if it was not to extend, I would have to hear, which I did not hear from my peers, that we will review this November 30th, or we would review this, whatever, I just cannot wait till June to review. I cannot put the district into that position, I cannot, I cannot do that. I, if somebody wanted a little more time to see job experience or, or to review items, but, but I, as I said, so I will be supporting your motion, but as I said, I can understand where people may want to discuss improvement measures, maybe, I'm not sure what, what the purpose of other board members are, but automatic renewal, I, I'm not, I'm not a big fan of that, but I know just to get evaluations done and this on the agenda took me bringing it up in a discussion meeting, and I feel it will lack, fall to the wayside with no action. I think that, and it's not this man, it's any person sitting at the helm deserves that respect of some clarity in their future, whether it's direction, and since, as I said, you know, I, I don't like the automatic renewal, so I'm glad that you changed your motion to extend the contract. As I said, there'll be a new board possibly elected next August, possibly not, but that, that's, there's a lot of moving parts, and I think that the direction of this district needs clarity in its leader, and to not extend and leave it till June, I'm not comfortable with.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Yes, I have a question for, for my colleagues who are contemplating not supporting this motion. Do you wish our superintendent to look for other employment opportunities?
Nope.
Because that's a message we're sending.
I wanna see results, and we don't have those results.
We have the results.
You don't have them?
Mr. Chairman, we do, other than AP.
Okay. Okay, okay, any other discussion? This is roll call vote.
No, I, I just, you know, my evaluation, I think it was reasonable progress towards satisfactory, not that I don't wanna see what can be done over the next year, it's just going into another year, following, not knowing how this year, if we're going to meet expectations on this, you know, in the first year, I, you know, our principals don't have guarantee, our teachers don't have guarantee, our CWA workers don't have guarantee, and that's just part of life. But, you know, this is serious, it's, if expectations aren't being met over this next year, I, I'm not comfortable automatically giving another year, not knowing how this year's gonna go.
Yeah, I just wanna say how usually something like this plays out. Because there was a three-year contract at this point by Mr. Frost's, Frost's motion, we're renewing for one year, I would imagine at that point, there's gonna be some sort of negotiation. I'm sure this, the superintendent at that point, through discussion, you know, will want a, you know, as most superintendents do, a three-year contract. So there will, that extra year is a, is, is, because, you know,
When we...
In fairness, these two board members didn't hire Dr. Rendell, so, they have, they're coming in with a different set of eyes, is what I'm saying. So, you know, my thoughts, and I, you know, it's not even hard to publicly discuss, but, I mean, renewing a year, there's not even any salary negotiation, all terms are set in, 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 in stone to the contract that's existing, there's no raise, I remember there was issues of a car, we didn't give him a car, any of those things. So, as, just from the other side of, as you know, when we go through bargaining, there's another side of offense, and at some point, it, him or any person in that seat, I'm sure will renegotiate a contract of more length, and whether there's any salary, as people expect salaries, right, increases. So, I, I guess what I'm saying is, I, I would support the one-year contract, totally anticipating a totally new contract negotiation at the end of the one year. That is an option, correct, Ms. DiAgresta? And how would that be initiated, contract? I, I know we could, we could do whatever we want, we could just do that, but I mean, even if we viewed to ex- whatever we want. We could just do that, but, I mean, even if we viewed to extend the contract, at some point, I'm not talking about Dr. Adams, but Dr. La, Dr. LaCarva? He renegotiated contracts as well. So I would imagine, you know, to be on a more positive note, Dr. Rendell, that you might have some issue, you know, as you go along and you produce, you know, let's take a positive attitude. There may be some contract negotiations in a positive manner he might want to negotiate. So what would be that process?
The, both the superintendent and the school board in the past have amended the employment agreement, and I believe it was chairman who brought up that we extended the date for the report of, a report on the goals to allow additional time for that data to come in. So perhaps the board wants to have a discussion at another board meeting or discussion session about perhaps extending that date to even further, to really ensure that we can get the data out of the Department of Education. If there are other data points that aren't available at this time of the year, perhaps we can look at when those data points become available, and is there an opportunity to have a, a review of the goals at that time, when those additional data points come out. Perhaps high school graduation data doesn't come out until December, I think. So, I mean, there, I think there are always opportunities to have a discussion about revising the agreement. We have a contract right now, and so it will take both parties to have that discussion and agree on it. So as those other items come up, certainly bring them up, and we can do amendments to the employment agreement at any time. We're not tied into a specific time, but we do need to have the discussion of what types of issues are you looking at as far as timing and timelines and goals, and those dates, I think, are very important to be sure we have the right dates in the employment agreement.
So I have one more question about timeline. So if, and this was a problem with return of data, within the contract, it says June 30th. So will that timeline go, which is problematic again with data and things like that, with the no action for June 30th of 2018, it wouldn't automatically roll to 2020?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
We had a timeline deadline of June 30th, 2017.
Yes.
With no action, if nobody brought it up, it was a sin of omission, and nobody said anything, and we were mum up here, it would roll over. Is there a timeline? There's no timeline, to my understanding, for 20, June 30th next year, that it would automatically roll again?
Yes, the contract continues on, and on June 30th of 2018, or prior to that date, this board would have the same general discussion of an evaluation, approval of an evaluation or adoption of, of the composite evaluation, as well as making a determination whether to allow the contract to extend for an additional year, or to stop the, the contract from extending, or some other action with regard to the term of the agreement. The contract continues on, and each year, you have these same items that you need to complete and then approve or not approve.
So, Mr. Cersei, I just want to elaborate. So this is what some of the inherent problems of this is. You have a school year that ends June 30, well, you know, whatever the school date is, but the fiscal year ends June 30th. You have people, whether they're leaving our employment, or even if we were to get new employment, you know, or if, if that, to start a school near, new year somewhere. So we put that at a very bad time. The contract itself is a very, it's not like a January 1st timeline, where you could have last year's data, you could have enough time to evaluate, you know, kudos amen, whether it's this or another superintendent, or give somebody options to, for a board to shop, you know. So this is an inherent problem built in with the timeline with the contract, and, and that's for the reason why I will support an extension, because the, I mean, that's the way I feel, that the contract itself, itself with these dates and with information back in the hurry to get this in, and it's just not fair to, to us to scuttle about and get this stuff together. We had extended a timeline, and it wasn't even enough. We don't, we're not fair to our employee in a giving notice. Like, if you waited till June, that's not fair to the school district, to shop. It's not fair to all parties involved. It's just, I think it's an inherent problem with the timeline of the contract that was constructed three years ago. That might be something, as we, you know, as I said, for me, when I support this rollover, that, that is something that might be in need of change for all parties, for, for fair, you know. I mean, everybody usually views on back-year data. I mean, we're, we're always viewing on current year data, hurry up, and, you know. Do you know what I'm saying?
I have a question. Okay, as I, as I reread this now, there is an option to do nothing, which would result in the rollover. However, my motion, as, as made, it seems would trigger opening of negotiations to include compensation determined by mutual consent. Is that accurate? If I set the date, rather than do nothing, the date is set, does that then open negotiations?
Mr. Frost, I understand your motion to include the stopping of the automatic rolling of the agreement and to have a hard stop. Okay. I wanted to be sure I understood the motion.
Fair.
Your motion was to allow the contract to extend until June 30th of 2019 and continue on with all of the evaluations and future board decisions regarding further extensions of the contract. The contract currently has a provision in it that says if the superintendent's evaluation is, where's the word, satisfactory or greater, then the superintendent is entitled to the same salary increase as other salary increases for administrators in the district, if that were to occur. So this, any salary increases have already been addressed in the agreement. If the board or the superintendent wished to reopen that provision and negotiate something different, you can certainly do that, but currently, those, those items have been addressed.
So we're going to fall into this next year.
Every year.
We'll never be able to open the, I, I understand what you were trying to do, and it would be remove that motion and put another one in to reopen the contract upon mutual consent, but I don't even know if you do that in public. But the thing is, is I, I understand, so this automatic rollover will just in perpetuity keep going. We'll never be able to address the timeline. We'll never be able to address, you know, you know, other things. So, you know, I understand what you were asking. I, I'm reading it the same way.
Yeah. So next year, this will be a similar conversation about 2020, correct?
We'll just have the same conversation.
Mr. Cersei, may I?
Yes.
If we, if we could take ourselves off of the July 1, June 30 time period for a moment, and let's just assume that November is a great date for board members to have a meeting. In November, the school board could determine to have a discussion session to talk about an appropriate timeline for the superintendent's evaluation to occur. If, if the month of June isn't the best time for an evaluation of a superintendent to occur for, for this board, because there's, isn't enough data or information or time in the month of June, what is a better month? Have that discussion. Have that discussion with Dr. Rendell. What's a better month for that to occur? If the July 1, June 30 term of the agreement, which is essentially matched to your fiscal year, if that's not, you don't feel like that's the best time period to have the term of the employment agreement, there's no law that says you have to have it on that date. You could pick the standard federal grant, you know, of October 1 to September 30. You could pick another fiscal term for the employment agreement that better matches data or information or the process that you'd like to put in place. I just think it's important for you to have that discussion of what would be a better timeline. In the past, you did reopen this agreement to, to change some of the dates, especially the, the date to establish goals. Originally, in the contract, you were required to establish goals by June 30, which wasn't, you, you didn't feel it was appropriate to make that decision by that timeframe. So you've moved that date, the superintendent and the board together, to the first meeting in August, which gives you more of the summer to look at information and come up with appropriate goals. You can have that same decision, that same discussion with your superintendent with regard to the evaluation timeline as well.
So, let me ask him.
Okay, Sean.
Clarification. So for, for anyone who, who may oppose this motion, I have another question. Would you be comfortable with his contract ending June 30th, 2018? Because, well, let me.
It does now, if we do nothing.
Is that a trick question?
No, it's a, it's a yes/no question.
Yes.
You'd be comfortable with that?
Yes, but, yes, but, then we need to immediately, as soon as we get the results from the measurable outcomes that we've asked for, that actually superintendent recommended, these are some outcomes that we want to have, that we immediately enter contract negotiations with the superintendent to renegotiate the contract. That was a yes answer, Sean.
Okay.
I concur.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Justice.
I move that we close debate and vote immediately on the pending question.
Call. Okay. Call for the question. Now, Ms. Porcell?
Mrs. Justice?
Yes.
Mrs. Simcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Frost?
Yes.
Mrs. Zork?
No.
Chairman Cersei?
No. Okay, that takes care of item O. The next item is superintendent's report. Dr. Rendell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There's been some really good news for the district in the press lately. There's a great article about one of our students. Skylar Bragg is a student at Vero Beach Elementary, a great article written by Larry Reisman recently. Skylar is a very special kid. He's, faces a lot of physical challenges that most of us don't face, and he seems to be able to overcome them with a great spirit. He serves as an inspiration to all of us. I kind of became acquainted with Skylar on one of my visits to Vero Beach Elementary last year, and have made it a point to visit with him every time I go to Vero Beach Elementary. One of the things I like about visiting with Skylar is when I go visit with him and see all that he has overcome, then it makes all of my struggles seem insignificant, and I'm able to be recharged and refreshed by being in his presence. Also on the Twitter world, a lot of us are aware that our very own Kate Fiori, also from Vero Beach Elementary, was interviewing this week. She's a finalist for State Teacher of the Year, and her interviews, which we hope she knocked out of the park, were this week. So hopefully on July 13th, she'll be named the Florida Teacher of the Year. A great honor for us here as a district. It'd be a loss for about a year if she would go out on the campaign trail as the Teacher of the Year, but we do wish her luck, and we know that she did very well in those interviews. That's all, Mr. Chair.
What date is that, that the?
July 13th is the, is when the announcement will be out.
Okay. Discussion items. Ms. Justice?
No, sir.
Okay, Ms. Simcheck?
No.
Oh, yes, yes.
Yes.
So, piggybacking our last conversation, I do think that when we are in the workshop of setting goals, that I hope we do address better timelines. I think that that's important in fairness to the superintendent, and in fairness to us to evaluate some of the information. I, I just think that will be helpful to, to do that in, in the future. That's it.
Very good. Okay, Ms. Frost?
Nothing for discussion.
I had, I'm sorry, Ms. Zork.
No, I'm going to reserve my discussion item until the next meeting.
Till the next meeting, okay. One of the things that came up during this, this, I don't know, I guess, June 15th, I got a note on it, that we don't have a procedure for allowing folks to take off the first week or two or three of school. And I would think that we need to, I don't know if it's in the contract or what, but we need to have some guidelines on that, so folks know that if, if today's the first day of school, don't plan your vacation or whatever you're going to do, and I don't know if that's something that you need to do, or that, I don't know how it needs to happen, but it needs to be clear to people that, you know, it's important to be here for the first week of school, first two weeks, first three weeks of school. So I don't know how you folks feel about it, but it, we need to make a, I don't want to make rules about it, but we need to have rules about that. Is that something you can handle?
Direction of the board, if we want to change board policy, that would be something for the board to do.
Could you reinstate, could you restate what the board policy is, because it, it's kind of open-ended out there about taking off?
I don't know what the policy is, but I know that apparently it, the request that came down violated our policy, if indeed we have a policy.
The length of time that the employee was going to be gone requires approval of leave, and the first 10 days of school was when the employee was going to be missing work, and those are very critical days for all the students in the classes that the teacher would be teaching, so that request for leave was denied.
I agree with the decision 100%. I just, if there's some way we can clarify it for everybody in the district, I mean, you know, just, in, in, in private employment, there are certain times that you cannot take vacation. Doesn't matter.
So we will come back with some language.
That's right.
So perhaps some language in the section of policy that talks about the extended leaves to say there are certain times of the year at which leaves would not be granted.
How, how does the law read on for religious purposes, the request of leave? Because I think I got the same letter.
It's not a religious holiday. It's a trip.
Is it a hodge? I guess it doesn't matter.
I mean, it's not a religious holiday, so it's different than.
Do we know that? Do we know that it wasn't a celebration?
That's what it said in the letter. It was just a trip.
So I'm a little confused as to how we take action on an item on discussion going forward. I think we need to be very clear in giving direction to the superintendent, so I understand that you have requested at this point that we reevaluate what the board policy is as far as stipulating certain times of the year when we will not allow employees to take vacation. Am I correct in hearing?
We're not voting on that.
I understand, sir.
We've asked for information and input on it.
You've asked for information and input on it, so I'm asking for the board, does, Ms. DiAgresta, do we need to have consensus to have that move forward when we're discussing something, or can a board member just bring something up and ask for it to be, I don't know, I'm asking. I'm not.
Why wouldn't he be able to ask for information?
I don't know.
On everything.
We've talked about work for, tasking employees with work. That's, that's something that we've discussed as a board, that if we're going to ask for a project or something to be researched or all of that, that, I'm just asking.
Well, there's nothing that would preclude us from asking the superintendent to draft a policy for the board to consider it a later date, and we could, in theory, make a motion as such, a second, and then move through rubber tules.
Well, no, 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 no. This is discussion.
It doesn't have to be published. We're, we're in a public, open meeting.
Right. That's my question. I don't, I'm learning.
We can say, we're going to paint these walls blue tomorrow, and then three of us, and off we go. Right? That's our, I mean, that's, so we can do that. We could, we could say, please draft a policy that says no vacations, whatever your, your feelings are between these periods, and then the board will consider it a future date.
Yeah, but that's not action. That's consensus for him to draft it. Then he will bring it back as an action item.
Correct. I, I believe I saw enough head nods that that's something that the board wanted me to go and take some action on.
Mr. Cersei, just to be clear, I'm not trying to be disrespectful. I'm just trying to understand the process. I just want to understand the process so I can be effective.
Okay, very good. That's my take on it. Who else got something? Nothing else in discussion?
Listen, we still have another meeting.
Yeah, okay.
Member matters, though.
School board member matters. I got them all tonight, Sean.
I just have, yeah, I just.
Sean, you start off.
Thank you. I just have two things real quick. It's unfortunate, some of the speakers who spoke about communication earlier have left, but hopefully they'll watch this on playback. I kept leaning forward. I, I kept hearing, okay, we need to use other forms of communication, and then I would lean forward and wait for those, you know, whether it's hit me up in the DMs or whatever, you know, whether it's Twitter, whether it's YouTube, what are the forms of communication? So hopefully, we'll sort that out, because, you know, that's, if, if you're not communicating, using the channels people use, then it doesn't matter, you know. Obviously, rubicalls and Connect Ed and all those things are, are normal things we use, aren't reaching all stakeholders, so we need to refine that. So hopefully, we will hear from some folks as to what specifically we can do to, to be better in that, in that arena. And that's, that's my member matters. I went and saw some bills. arena. And that's, that's my member matters. I went and saw some bill signings and stuff like that, got a pen. That's what I've been up to.
Ms. Simcik?
No, nothing.
Ms. Justice?
The Indian River County, that has, the school district in Indian River County, we've received an award again for, from the campaign for grade level reading. And the Moonshot Rocket, the, a bus, it's this bus here, that the Learning Alliance has, and is spreading the message of literacy across the United States, has just arrived back. They visited a number of different, of different cities around the, the country. And the question that they continue to ask is, what does it take to build a Moonshot community, such that we create literate, compassionate, caring citizens who will improve our world? And for those of you who aren't aware, there is a Moonshot Community Action Network, a group of people in Indian River County, different nonprofits and businesses, school district employees that get together every month, and we talk about, we talk about how we answer that question. And that, to me, is the burning question, not only in the school district of Indian River County, but across the country. So I was there yesterday to welcome the Moonshot Moment Mobile Literacy Lab back. We do great things in Indian River County. I support the Learning Alliance and the Moonshot Moment, and their continued support in our school district. They provide a lot of extended learning opportunities for our students. If you have time this Friday, the program Literacy on the Lagoon, which is a partnership between the school district, the museum, and the Environmental Learning Center, they'll be doing a performance a little before 12 at the Vero Beach Museum of Art. And, again, just great community partnerships. I, I commend Dr. Rindell for continuing to work with the Learning Alliance. We're so lucky to have them as a community partner. And that is it for me tonight, sir.
Okay. I just had one thing to remind the board members, if they haven't already, the financial disclosure forms are due postmarked by July the 3rd. You've probably already taken care of them, but, and remember that we have to put on there that we've provided with the, but we have taken the ethics training. So if everybody's on board with that, that's the only thing that I have.
Okay. That's, new board members, we don't have to provide that on there yet, right?
Correct. Board members that were elected as of November of 2016, your ethics training is required to be completed in the calendar year of 2017, so you don't have to provide that disclosure at this.
Are you nervous there for a second?
That's a good question. That's a good question.
The sooner the better, though, because any records written in journals are up here, or public information, and there's a lot of things with financials and gifts that it would be beneficial for your board members to take it.
I'm sorry, I did participate in ethics training. Right. Well, being on state committees, you have to go through those trainings, so.
Okay, good. At this time, we're going to adjourn this meeting. I believe that's proper, correct? Okay, we're going to adjourn this meeting, and we're going to go into a special. Ms. DiAgresta?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As counsel to the school board, I need your guidance with, with regard to a matter of litigation. I anticipate that the session will last not longer than 60 minutes. The people in attendance at the session will be the five school board members, as well as the superintendent, myself, and a court reporter. So, Mr. Chair, when you're ready, if you would recess this meeting, and we will go upstairs to the closed session.
Meeting is recessed at this time.